Two oh one. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and the invocation will be led by Commissioner Adamsak and the pledge allegiance by Commissioner Rawls. All stand if you can.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us all together here to represent our community and hopefully we're doing all our work on your behest with your guidance, with your wisdom placed upon each of us, our to make the best decisions for our community as a whole and for the individuals who bring things forth. Please allow us the patience for our community and for all those that want to interact with us as a board to make sure we have our listening ears on and be able to listen for both your answer and their questions. With this Thanksgiving season coming up this week, please allow us all to be thankful for all the things that you've given us, for the opportunity given to us by COVID to be closer to some people within our homes and also to be able to use that time to reach out to those in our community. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Please throw me the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
My foot got caught up on the other foot. Alright, thank you Commissioner Adamsak. Thank you Commissioner Rawls. We're gonna go into our public comment. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect the board will engage or deliberate about matters on which the board have received. No prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your time to three minutes. If you hear the beep, that means your three minutes is up and we would ask you to try to wrap it up as soon as possible. I have three speaker cards, so the first one will be Linda Kreider. Linda, come on up. You're the next contestant on the panel. Welcome to the Board of County Commission meeting.
Thank you. Linda Kreider, I reside at 116 Kirkland Street, Palaca, Florida, in the Bartram Inn. And the item I wanted to bring forward is actually one that's on your agenda, but I wanted to-
You wanna wait till we discuss that?
Well, it's totally up to you. I was encouraged to come and speak at public comment and then if there was any questions later on-
I'll give you time at that time-
Okay.
-when we discuss that item.
That sounds fine.
Thank you. Mr. Tim Hotelin? Mr. Hotelin, will you give it to Ashley, please? She'll pass them out.
I'm gonna have to go get a jacket. It's cold in here. Thank you.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Hotelin.
Never learned how to count. Tim Hotelin, from San Mateo, 105 Riverside Drive. All this stuff that you see in front of you that I wrote was culmination of many months of trying to digest what I saw, what I've seen, and what I've witnessed. And concerns that the council doesn't receive full information that's necessary to help its duties and responsibilities and oversight of the operation, basically. As you know, I've been sitting here watching this stuff since Larry Harvey and I were youngsters. And so it gives a little bit of a benefit of background. And as a result, some employees seem to think that they need to whisper into my ear, 'cause I got a big mouth and I'll come and talk to you, which is basically what's going on. I've become very, very concerned that you guys have no knowledge, or well, y'all, the county, doesn't engage in any kind of exit interviews, doesn't ask employees what the heck and why, doesn't take notice when a critical fifteen-year senior or tenured employee suddenly separates. And a lot of other really good ideas that I think that are out there that don't get their just showing because nobody really asks. There's an extreme amount of concern on the employees and even employees that have separated feeling that they can't talk to anything, 'cause they'll never get another job in a county, they'll never this, there'll be retribution, they'll lose my job. Talked to one person that had her first ever in thirty-four years written reprimand. And I've dealt with a lot of employees that have had written reprimands. She got to the bottom line warning that said the next one will lead up to and include termination. She decided it was time to retire. To me, that's not really good employee morale. And it wasn't, I can only hope, the intent on that warning on the back, but she took it at face value, as do others. What I'm professing to you or suggesting to you at the end of this thing is that you might want to make sure that there's employee exit interviews. So you can ask them, are you just leaving because of the pay? I don't believe that a lot of, you know, the standard thing is we don't pay enough, so they leave. I think there may be other things. And I think those other things are controllable by the county. And unless you guys, y'all, are aware that there are things that can change, that should change, you can't fix them. And that's basically it.
Thank you, Mr. Hotelin. Appreciate you coming in. Ms. Holland?
I got some questions for Mr. Hotelin, if I could.
Yes.
Alright. Where you say here, it says, why did the commissioners not receive information that reorganization project moved on? Why, after position study, did Director of Public Services continue to be responsible for contracting? I don't understand the question.
No, I don't understand the question, but that was a part that I had, and I omitted it. Real concern, the council gave total authority without any benefit of question to the reorganization of everything in a county. And I'd heard comments from y'all saying, well, it's not our job to ask. Well, I think it is, was your job to ask. And things like when you move directors and they'll wake up one day and they'll become executive directors and no change in the job, I think begs a couple of questions. I think that the, what we've all, at least I've witnessed in the newspaper report on the FX of the county courthouse, and I know that that was, one of the inspectors here tried to close that down in nineteen ninety-six, so that's, you know, a long process, but should have had some sort of attention and some sort of knowledge. I was sort of surprised that y'all didn't seem to be aware of it. I had never heard of it. And it seemed to me that it should be something that you guys should have for your management skills to make a plan. Okay, we need to get together enough money to fix it. It shouldn't be a renter strike. And that's what it was. And it's the most recent thing is, and my great concern is that all of, and then within general services, as I understand it, part of the duties besides knowing how to do procurement, knowing how to pay bills and process all of that stuff, which is a huge job, is those folk were supposed to be responsible for making sure the windows are washed and the cobwebs are cleaned and the AC works. It's a whole different ball of tricks, bag of tricks, that you wouldn't, I wouldn't expect the same people to know, but the county did. And it worked for a while. But now, that person's been elevated and as I understand it, the job's going out to Public Works. And I don't know if they have the extra manpower with the job skills to do it. And I think that's questions that you all deserve to ask and, you know, again.
While I still have the floor. So regarding the courthouse, I did ask. So it's not falling on deaf ears. I had a meeting with staff at the courthouse. What I saw was extremely poor quality workmanship, a lot of stuff that was being ignored. And I asked the question, why? And what I was told was that we did not have people with the skill sets to be able to properly perform the work because the commission doesn't fund the department properly. Now, my pushback was, wait a minute, you set the budget. And it came right back to me again going, no, no, you guys set the budget. So that's something that the commission needs to deal with. As far as, you know, whether or not we have adequate staffing, you know, there's nothing I can do about it.
No, but it should, it should be skilled staffing. And as I know, there's nobody that's actually got a license for any of it.
I agree.
And that's how you can oversee that.
I need to interject.
Sir?
This isn't the time and place for that.
No.
This is a transportation workshop today. And I mean, honestly, if there's things that we need to deal with, let's deal with them at another workshop. But today is transportation. And we got people, we got topics-
Well, I came here specifically because this is usually a little bit more relaxed and you guys could absorb some of this. I'm by no means trying to, you know, that's all. And it, it-
But we can't-
It just seems to me that y'all might want to talk about some of these concerns, you know, lack of skill set.
And I'm sure we will with the paper you presented. Mr. Adamsak, you had, no, Mr. Turner.
I think that what you said is totally false, inaccurate, and unfair. We thoroughly vented changing the organizational flow of this county. We did it in two different workshops before we voted on it. And when we changed that around, we actually saved a hundred thousand for the county when we reorganized. So what you're saying here today, Mr. Tim, is not accurate. The other thing about the courthouse, I didn't go down there one time. I went down there multiple times and met with the chief judge. And we had to go through an inspection, his environmental consultant and our environmental consultant. So it isn't like there's something wrong. And one last thing before I leave you be is that Tim Smith told me that we do not need a new courthouse, that we don't use the courthouse we've got now to utilize it to its fullest potential because people pay their stuff online nowadays, that the traffic is less than fifty percent of what it was just ten years ago of people going in the courthouse. And that on any given day, you can go in there and they've got four courtrooms down there and maybe one of them will be used and used at any one time during the four, during the day out of the four courthouses. We don't need a new courthouse. We need to do the best we can with the one we have.
May I?
Yes, sir. I'm assuming, Mr. Chairman.
Would, hang on just a second. We really need to move him. Can I give it to Mr. Adamsak?
Can just-
Let me, let me hear from Mr. Adamsak. Mr. Adamsak?
So, I mean, I believe that there is some anonymity that Mr. Suggs, in this case, that's who is in the position, needs to have to pick under his budget who works for him. I wasn't here, I'm not really sure what our overview was of who he picked or how he picked it, but he does deserve some anonymity because ultimately, the way that he does his job reflects on whether or not he has a job. So I think he does deserve that. I think maybe we could potentially at some point in the future, talk about a way to put some more informative conversation back to the board from him as that process goes forward. I haven't read the document that outlines how that process goes, if there is one. I do think the leader does need some anonymity with oversight. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm just bringing topic, just-
Wrap it up.
All you have to do is read the environmental report on the courthouse to see how many times they say need serviced by a licensed professional, the HVAC, to realize that there's a problem and you need to review that so it doesn't happen again.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it very much.
If I could add one more thing, if you went in mind. So when I did go there, I had this conversation with Colonel Wells. One thing that perplexed me was how ninety percent of the answers were coming from a sheriff's deputy that was there at bailiff. And when I asked Colonel Wells about this, he said that his, they were being put in the middle because his, the sheriff's bailiff was the one that was being called by our staff to let people in or to help with work. And basically, he felt like he was stuck in the middle. And I told him, I said, this commissioner does not want the sheriff's department working on anything in that courthouse. That is a responsibility of buildings and grounds. So, you know, I can kind of understand where Tim's coming from. And, you know, that was my first experience with buildings and grounds. And, you know, when I asked a question about what licensed trades or what kind of skilled tradesmen we had, the last thing I expected to hear was, we don't have one. We got this guy, Timmy, that's, you know, comes from who knows where and he's running the show. And, but, you know, we don't have the money to pay the people to adequately hire somebody. I know what I pay skilled tradesmen and we're not paying our guys like that. So until we get that done, and that's part of our budget process, we're gonna end up with the same result.
And one last thing, if DP, yeah, scout's honor. If, if in fact you've moved shift at the DPW, it'd be a good idea to make sure they have the resources to support those responsibilities.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna move right into our-
I have one more comment. So I fully am for community coming and saying whatever they want and reporting regardless of the medium because it may be the only opportunity they have, given their schedule. With that said, you had mentioned that there's a better place to have this conversation. When do we want to schedule this conversation? So Mr. Tim Hotelin can go further into whatever details it is he wants. We left that part out of the, let's have a further discussion at a different date and time. What is that date and time? I'd like for us to establish that, if that's possible.
It'll be the next workshop, if he wants to bring it to that.
Would you like to bring it to the next workshop?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry you got to move on, but I've got to say one more thing. Before, before we're gonna take Mr. Hotelin's story as his innuendos and conspiracy theories and put him on a workshop for further discussion, I've got to have some proof. Because half of the things in this letter that he just gave us, I know to be inaccurate. Personally, I know to be inaccurate. So before we go down that rabbit hole, let's make sure there's a hole that we're fixing to jump off in, please.
And I was gonna say, board members, go talk to people, get the information. It's right here available to you. Take Mr. Hotelin if you need to. Let's get this thing cleaned up. But we're gonna be talking transportation. Ms. Holland, do you want to wait till we talk about, okay, so let's just move forward with item A, FDOT, Transportation Alternative Set-Aside Program. Mr. Troxler?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Alright, this first one is, is for our, basically a trail program. It's part of the F dot TAP funding for twenty twenty-six, or two trails, Springside Trail, the trail expansion, and the St. John's Avenue Bike Path Trailhead. Potential trail location that could be added to the list of applications is shown in Exhibit A. It's in the back packet there. And that would connect an existing trail along State Route one hundred to the Palaca-St. Augustine State Trail via San Mateo and East McCormick Road. But with that, there's also another one we talked about this morning with Ms. Kreider. So we would like to actually add a third, a third trail, a third application going forward for some potential funding in twenty twenty-six.
I have a question for you. I'm a little confused. I thought the St. John's Avenue was already a done deal.
This is a-
This is an extension.
Yeah, it's not, it's not the, it's not the one that's already in the works. That's been awarded already.
So, so the one coming around the sports complex and St. John's Avenue, those two were permanent. We already have that.
That's a done deal.
Those are done deals.
Mike Nimitz brought this to us a year ago.
That's what I'm saying. These were, these are done.
They're, well, they're in the process, but they're not, they're not completed.
No, I don't think we've got the grant funding for them.
Huh?
I think they were, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, please.
I think that, that what they were trying to do then was apply for a grant that they didn't get, and now they're trying to reapply for a grant for portions of this.
I thought we had a design.
When we discussed it earlier last year, I believe that we agreed to fund the maintenance agreement on part of these trails as part of them moving forward. But I don't, I'm not sure that my memory serves me well enough to say which ones we decided to fund.
It wasn't this one. That was the one to Enlark and, and-
Excuse me, I think I have the floor.
Yeah, hang on, hang on.
And so the only thing I really see different between this one and the last one is that they've added the Curry Road loop to it. That, everything else I think I've seen before except for the Curry Road loop in previous presentations. Is that right, Craig?
That's what I-
I have to get up and get a little bit of background. I think right now we're mixing apples and oranges.
Yeah, you're gonna have to come up to the microphone. Maybe he could clear this up.
Come on.
Okay, thank you. Craig, would you come up and explain?
Use my tri vocal, sir, I'm sorry. Craig McLean, the-
We want to buy the tire, okay?
We want to buy the tire. Actually, it's more the tire than the vehicle. Craig McLean, Vice Chairman for the Trails, portion of the Waterways and Trails Committee, your advisory body. Essentially, kind of what we're looking at, this time last year, the county commissioner approved the, being the maintenance entity for sections of the St. John's River to Sea Loop from East Palaca to south of Crescent City and the two and a half mile section of the Palaca Lake Butler Trail from essentially Water Management District to the Italian Latin Grill.
I don't believe that. To be accurate, I don't think we went below Dunn's Creek.
We did go below Dunn's Creek.
Right, I didn't think we did either. What you had authorized was a mileage. It was, I believe, sixteen miles of the St. John's River to Sea Loop and two and a half miles of the Palaca Lake Butler Trail. And depending, the DOT's already constructed sections of that trail and are in the process of constructing more. So that sixteen miles actually extends a bit south of the Dunn's Creek Bridge.
Okay, well, the intent was definitely that we went to Dunn's Creek on the stuff that DOT had already done on their previous stuff, and that we did the stuff between the Latin Grill and Water Management out there and tried to get it finished and completed. So we agreed on that area in there. But I don't remember on agreeing on anything south of Dunn's Creek.
Okay.
And, and the new portion about the Curry Road deal is brand new. Now, y'all got to admit that, it's brand new.
No, that's, that's brand new and-
I, when Ms. Kreider called and talked to me about it or whatever, I basically said, I'm not sure that I'm on board with that. Because basically, all you have to do is drive a few hundred yards up the street and take the little cutoff by the women's club and come back. And instead of, and it's already paved and you don't have to pave Curry Road, which is a long road with three houses on it. So it's a lot of expense that you're asking for, you know, and maintenance in the future-
Right.
-to just keep from driving up. You don't even have to use one hundred at the corner. You can use the little cutoff by the women's club, you know, in, in San Mateo out there. You know what I'm talking about? It's all paved already. So I'm not exactly sure why we would spend that much money or try to spend that much money on, I know we're going after a grant for, and maybe if we could get it paved by grant, I would go along with it. I think that's what we're asking for today, isn't it, Mr. Troxler, is to ask for a grant to pave that road?
It'd be, it'd be the grant process. Whatever we do with that grant.
So all we're agreeing to is to file for a grant to pave that road. And if we get the grant, then we would have to take the maintenance of, of that road. But we would get pavement to offset the maintenance costs. Is that in a nutshell what we're asking for, Craig, or did I miss something?
Well, I'm not greatly into details on the Curry Road type here. What I will tell you, though, is what the county commission applied to DOT for was a corridor assessment from East Palaca through the San Mateo area, south of Dunn's Creek Bridge. And it's a corridor assessment, essentially to plan that route. So that's ultimately what the assessment will do down the road when DOT fully funds that. In the meantime, Linda Kreider had identified a, kind of a quick workaround to make a safe route for the trail. I think it's worth looking into how to do that. Maybe go ahead and put it on the TAP application so that it's in part of DOT's queue. DOT likes things that have been blessed by a commission. Then they can, you know, add it to their gears and move things along. I think that would be a good idea to go. And then locally, we can still kind of assess the local route and what's the best way to connect while DOT's funding the actual full assessment from East Palaca down to Crescent City. I want to take one step back as far as which section the BCC approved last summer. I think that's something, or last December. We want to maybe take a look at that action, make sure we're clear on exactly what the commission did and then what the commission had applied for.
Craig, sticking with the agenda here, number one, Springside Trail.
Yeah, I'm going to that one. I was trying to outline those three. So essentially, we just talked about the St. John's River to Sea Loop part, which is East Palaca down in Crescent City with the Curry Road.
Which is brand new, just show-
Curry Road is the brand new part. The other item is on the St. John's River, excuse me, St. John's Avenue section of the trail, which I call the Springside Connector. So maybe we can get together and give them all the names we agree on. But essentially, my understanding is DOT, that has, the design has been funded and completed. Probably a couple of years ago, we came to the commission and asked that the routing through the park
Right.
be extended. That's essentially what I think was applied, the county approved last January for the TAP program. And that's, that's an okay thing. The Trail Advisory Committee asked for that. The Board of County Commissioners had approved that alternate funding to do that work through the park, that kind of thing. So that's all good. And then-
I think we approved the engineering for that, didn't we? Isn't that one that was out there that we approved the engineering?
Yeah, we approved the engineering using county general funds.
No, should we, yeah, for the engineering.
Right, right, right. And so that work, you know, essentially should be moving along. One of the questions I asked the Public Works last February, I believe, and this is right about the time when most people got sent home with COVID, so to speak, or from it. But I'd asked that Public Works come and present what they took to the county commission on January and explain that TAP application. And it also brings another concern of mine is, and I have not yet had a chance to work with Mike Trox, so I'll hear great things. So I'm looking forward to meeting with them. One of my concerns is, the county has a Waterways and Trail Advisory Committee. I think these kinds of things can come through that body to refine them, polish them. I will offer right now my services to review the TAP application, help polish it up, proof it, make sure we have all the right trail names in there. Those things are important because if DOT labels it wrong, then, you know, it's a quagmire down the road. So we'll offer that. But also extend the request that the county's advisory committee be used.
I agree.
And that kind of thing. So I think we're there. We're able to do it. If we need to move something faster, we can always call a subcommittee to move things along quicker. So with that, unless you have any other questions. Actually, one of my other concerns with the TAP application, and it's gonna be- So with that, unless you have any other questions, um, actually, one of my other concerns with, um, the TAP application, and it's going to be revised or resubmitted, is I think that the trailhead that's location on here, that trailhead wasn't run through the advisory committee, and I don't think it's a good location.
Craig, I was fixing to ask you that.
The park in itself should provide functional parking for any, you know, trail access that's needed, saving that cost. And if the county wants to add a trailhead into the TAP program, I think the one we talked about before they turned this application in was the one at the old, um, Pew Factory just west of the Water Management District. And that's the project that the county asked the state to purchase. It's currently the trailhead that's dirt, not mowed regularly yet.
Yeah.
So that would probably be the best one to apply for funding for at this time.
Okay, but, okay, so the bottom line, my question to you, and Mr. Rawls, I know you got your light on, I'll get to you in just a second. Who picked that area there on St. John's Avenue and West Larson Boulevard, that corner for a proposed trailhead? Now, I, I'll tell you this, in speaking with Mike Nimitz a long time ago, he, he had the idea of going west out past the Children's Resource Center, right there, to put a trailhead. But not, I think that's a valuable corner piece of property for us to put a vacant trailhead there.
Well, that, that piece of property is currently part of the youth sports complex, and I don't think it's a good location for a trailhead.
Not that one.
So I think we should abandon that one and then just use the existing parking within the park.
Why don't we do this, then? Everything needs to go back to your committee. Linda, Mr. Rawls, would you mind if I bring Linda, because she's got a card to speak? Linda, would you come up and speak real quick to us? Craig, thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda Kreider. And I sit on the Waterways and Trails Committee also with Craig. And this has, issue of Curry Road has come up twice in the two previous meetings, and the recommendation was to go ahead and talk with Public Works and to try and get it on the transportation workshop, which is what I did. In talking with, uh, Mike Rodriguez, who, by the way, I'm very impressed by, was easy to work with, responded very quickly, well, and comes from Colorado where he knows a whole lot about trails, so we're very happy to have him. But he, uh, had recommended, as opposed to what I initially talked with Mr. Turner about, in terms of a, uh, pavement project for Curry Road, was he said it would, he thought it would be better to bring it forward on the TAP program, which is a grant-funded program, FDOT. So it's not county money for pavement. It's a grant program that is specifically addressing trails and trail connections. And the reason that I was bringing it forward was the fact that this is a real vital connection between, if you turn to where the map is and you look here on the map, it's a vital connection in the St. John's River to Sea Loop Trail. And right now, the FDOT is spending millions of dollars creating a trail south towards Dunn's Creek, along the east side of the road. They're going to go under Dunn's Creek, up over the bridge with a separated bicycle pedestrian path, and then continue down as part of their project. But if you look at the page just before the map, you'll see what happens on the north end of that project. No, it's not that. It's where you see all the pictures. And it's item number, picture number, um, seven. So that's where the trail ends right now. And that's right at Curry Road, and then that's looking up Curry Road. According to Mike, in developing this concept for a TAP application, he said he checked into right of way along Curry Road and the fact that it then connects, if you look at the map, it connects up right next to the, um, church there. The, uh, I'm not sure, Presbyterian Church, I think. And then goes across to Old San Mateo Road, which is a road very, um, very seldom used because it parallels 17. So it's, um, a good road for cycling. It's just been recently repaved so we could just put the sharrow arrows on it. It goes up to a little one-lane br- bridge that goes over, connects to Cannon Road, which we were able to get paved through Public Works a couple of years ago, which then connects to McCormick and comes right into the trail at, at right, the East Palaca Post Office. So it's a, a real important connection in that link of a major trail system. But right now, it's not ridable, I've, in terms of a normal, regular bicycle, maybe a big fat tire sand bike, but not for people who would be riding the St. John's River to Sea Loop. And I've taken a couple of people on it, both of them fell in the sand. So it's less than a mile. It is eligible in every category there for the TAP program, which is a grant program, so it would not be county funds. We are LAP certified, which means the state, if we fill out all the requirements the correct way, they just give us the money to do it. So, um, I think it's a, a real good project to bring forward and put on that list. Uh, what would be required is, is a resolution from the commission that, to go ahead forward with putting at least these two items, the Springside, um, St. John's Avenue connection around the, the sports park, maybe delete the, I mean, I tend to agree that I'm not sure that's the best place for a trailhead or we need it for parking. We've got plenty of parking. So maybe we just bring those two items, the Curry Road linked part and the very first one, St. John's Avenue, forward with the TAP program. But if we wait, then we have a whole nother year to wait. And, um, I think it's our in-good-faith effort as a county to go ahead with something like this because if you look at what's being spent along, um, 17 going south, that's a lot of money and a long trail that's important in that whole system and linkage.
Thank you.
So that's the history.
Rawls, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you very much, Linda. And I, I agree, I think, I think we should make that, um, connection at Curry Road. I, I wrote "why" on top of the, uh, page five of the sports complex because I'm, I'm really perplexed. I thought that we had this in design and it was already settled.
I know.
And, and I'm just wondering why it's coming back before us? Because we, we've had at least three meetings that I can think of regarding, um, the trail going through and around. And I remember driving out there, looking at where everybody parks in the sand, where they have the proposed trailhead now. But I thought, I thought this was already designed.
My recollection, and Craig can, can correct me, was that it was approved by the commission.
Okay.
But whether or not it was then brought forward in the TAP application, maybe not. And so-
So the question is, the question is whether or not we, we would approve requesting TAP funds to do the, to put this trail in? Is that what I'm hearing? Is that what the, the ask is right now?
That may be the ask, but I have not, I don't-
Okay, whoa, whoa, gotta do it at the microphone.
Yeah.
Craig McLean, back of the mic. The county commission had approved the funds for the engineering design work. And I don't know what the status of that is. Exactly what would cover the construction hadn't been decided. So this may be the application for that part. If, uh, for example, the construction dollars that DOT allocated for St. John's Avenue from Highway 19 to the sports complex didn't have enough to continue on. I initially had raised a concern because I felt the design and the construction funds should actually connect the trail and not abandon it at the, uh, through the park. And that's why we got in. So I think the question is, what's happened with the design that the county funded? And then how does that connect to the request for additional funds, whether DOT or elsewhere, to actually do that construction through the park?
While you're at the mic, what about the trailhead at 309C?
That was, uh, initially were put forward last year when the county staff wanted to put the TAP application in. And we had advised them that 309C intersection is currently not a great location because we don't have a safe crossing. So let's not encourage a lot of crossing if we don't have to. So we had suggested the Pew Factory location, which is the state-owned, county-requested trailhead just west of Water Management District. And this particular trail that's been identified on the map, I'm not sure where it came from. I don't think it's needed in that particular location. I think the parking can be handled by the, uh, within the sports complex, save that funds. And, um-
So, um, what y'all are asking for today, Mike, is permission to go forward with the 2027 request?
This is basically what today's-
Yeah.
-ask is, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, so, can you say that again, sir?
You, you're, you're wanting to go ahead and put in a, uh, an application for TAP funds that might be funded in 2027?
Correct.
Okay, correct. Because you, they, they've closed out, 2021 shot, right?
Yes.
They're doing, they, they weren't taking it this year.
No, they were not taking it anymore, no.
Okay.
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I think Commissioner Rawls cleared up most of my questions, but I believe, just to be sure, because I'm a little slow sometimes, we're asking to turn in an application for a TAP grant to pave Curry Road and these other improvements, but we're not going to do the 309 trailhead because I'm pretty sure that the commission voted no. They didn't want it there in that meeting that Craig was talking about. This has already been voted on, so that we don't want it there.
Okay, we can pull that one from it.
Yeah, so it's, it's not a proper location according to that committee to put that trailhead.
Very dangerous.
And so if we've already voted no, and you're asking me to change my vote today to yes for a location that we thoroughly discussed and voted no, my answer is still no. But I am more than willing to go and try to pave Curry Road and do whatever if we can get a TAP grant to do it. Because otherwise, they could just turn right on Central and go across 17 to go south to the trail. So it's, uh, you know, it's, your own bicycles are, I mean, so you got to ride an extra hundred yards or something. So, but you're riding bicycles miles. So, so, but if we could get Curry Road paved under the TAP agreement, I, I'm in. But I don't believe I would vote to do it out of county funds just for a bicycle path versus somebody that gets stuck in their road in front of their house and can't get in and out if we need to pave something. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Adams, that?
And this is a little bit off subject, but I, I guess, Craig, I think it was last December that there was a workshop where you kind of outlined the priorities of Putnam Blueways and Trails of your committee. And then the whole commission kind of went through it and they, they chose which ones to, to go with. Is there an opportunity maybe to have a workshop where they outline their priorities from their committee to us again, just so that we're aware of it? Because I think that was over, almost a year ago.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that-
It may have happened when I wasn't-
I wasn't trying to interrupt.
Yeah, no, no problem. But it may have happened, but I, being new, I'm not sure if I saw that meeting, if it's happened since last December.
At the last meeting, we had, I think it was, uh, Sam Carr showed up with a presentation, and we put that presentation off until such time, and I realize you weren't at that meeting. And so that's why I'm trying to explain it, that, uh, Mr. McLean's supposed to come in the future and give that presentation and whittle it down to five to 10 minutes instead of the hour and a half that we got last December.
I know I created some of that hour and a half, personally.
Actually, that was September and November, an hour and a half each. But, um, we're actually scheduled to come back. The, um, county administrator asked us to come back on December 8th. That was a date that worked for us. And he's asked for a longer workshop so we can provide some in-depth information. So if you want to provide us some guidance on the amount of time you'd like us to give, um, please do so, otherwise, um-
That guidance has not been given yet on the five to 10-minute, uh, presentation versus the hour and a half.
I believe, I believe it was just echoed.
I think, if, if anyone doesn't mind, I, I don't think we should limit that time, personally. Because the, mostly because I believe the St. John's River to Sea Loop is one of the most important assets we could be building in this county. And any decision that we make, again, is pushed out to 2027, or in this case, it'd probably be 2029 or 2028. That is not only a local Putnam County issue, that's a geographical item. I mean, that spans multiple counties. It's, it's very important.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls.
So, regarding what, what, um, Craig was saying, I, I personally think that we should hear from that committee on a regular basis. This, this committee really does have a lot of responsibility, and it's a lar- it's a large committee. One of the questions that was brought up recently from, um, Sam was whether or not we could take a look at our, our membership, go through and vet everybody, see who wants to participate, because, you know, we want to make sure we have quorums, and, and it's a very active committee. So it, it is not just bicycle trails, it's also water trails. And, you know, like, uh, Mr. Adams actually said, these are economically very, um, very good for the community, and they're also a form of recreation. But I, I personally think that we should limit them. We should encourage them to come in on a regular basis, give us a report. And honestly, coming in once a year, I would expect it to take an hour. If, if you sat there through the meetings and listened to what we juggle and some of the conversations we have, Heinz Big Park, uh, Heinz Big's Park, for instance, you know, we've spent hours talking about that, boat ramps. And, uh, so I, I, I personally would say if, you know, if they're willing to come in and spend the time, we should give them the time.
Mr. Turner?
My point, my point was very, uh, was that I don't want to hear the same thing over and over and over again. If they've got new information they want to present, fine. I looked at the, the slideshow that Craig prepared for, uh, Mr. Carr to give that day, and Mr. Carr decided he didn't want to. And about half of it was information we heard last year. Now, I'm not saying that I don't want to be transparent and open to my people, or to the citizens of Putnam County, but I don't want to hear the same thing over and over and over that's already been ta- that's talked about and voted on or whatever. So, you know, I'm not saying I won't sit here for as long as it takes, but, you know, I, I just ask him to, to, uh, try to respect my time as much as I respect his time in the fact that if you want to, if you want me to hear the same thing over and over and over and over again, then, or be on account that we have new commissioners on the board, then let that commissioner go meet with them and learn the information and bring them up to date. And then let's learn new information, move forward, or the current recommendations that we want to do. Now, Craig, I, I'm not speaking directly to you, I'm really not, but, you know, I wasn't, but I am now. Is that, uh, you know, if, if you have, I'm not talking about that if we've said that we were interested in the past, but we're, we haven't done it yet, to not bring that forward as a recommend, that's not what I'm saying at all. What I'm saying is things that you know that we voted down specifically, I don't want to see them again, uh, like this trailhead thing by this park. We voted that down specifically. Right, I, I understand, but I just, that's my point, is if we're gonna, if we're gonna have a presentation, fine. I was being a little facetious on the five to 10 minutes, but anyhow, the presentation needs to contain accurate information on what we're trying to do now and what we're trying to get accomplished at this time. Thank you.
All right, let me clean something up real quick, and then I got to go to Mr. Adams, that? Two different trailheads we're talking about, one on St. John's Avenue, one at 309C and one, and 100. Correct. That's the one that's unsafe. The one on St. John's Avenue just kind of popped up, but I remember Mike Nimitz talking to me about that months and months ago. So that was a conception he had in his mind. So two different trailheads, one down there, Springside Cut Off, one up here on St. John's Avenue, okay? But here's my point, I think, and this is what I think. I think everything needs to go back to the committee, okay? And y'all need to clean all this up, come back to the board with what you really want to do. Because here's my point, the county's already spent money on the Springside Trail Sports Complex Engineering, okay? I don't want another project to come on top of that and us lose that ability to get that money when the county's already spent money trying to get that money. So I don't want to add another one just in, and then we get bogged down and we don't get anything. Let's, let's, let your committee identify what the priority is. Now, I know everything's a priority when it comes to trails, and I'm not being funny about that. I, I mean, I know everything needs to start connecting, I get that. But we're trying to work in that, those segments right now, okay? Does that make sense?
I think the value comes in breaking that stuff through.
Mr. Adams, that?
I'm sorry.
So I guess I, I agree with both of what, Mr. Turner, what you clarified at the end there, where if there's something we obviously said no to, that's a little bit different. Um, when I was at that meeting last November, I believe it was, um- Sorry, my voice is loud to begin with, so. When I was at that meeting last November, the way I felt it was left, outside of the one item that you're saying was voted down, was, hey, we can only, I only wanted to approve so much because we don't want to eat that whole $135,000 of if we put everything out there for the tires money, or what is, what's the word? Whatever, whatever the funding mechanism was. And then come back next year and we'll take little bites out of this. So that, that's the way you left that meeting, that was the last statement, and I'll, I'll go back and watch it to make sure I'm not wrong. But, uh, I believe that's where, and that's what I think I'm asking, is if you guys can come back and say, what are the next bites of the apple you want us to potentially take on? Ultimately, if you guys stack rank them or however you do it- Ultimately, if you guys stack rank them or however you do it, it is the board's decision of which ones we choose. We may choose the ones that are at least your priority. That's our, we're allowed to do that. But that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, Mr. Rawls.
So, I think, and this will help a lot, and I've talked to Mike about this. One of the things that has desperately been missing on this committee is representation by Public Works. So, Mike has given me a commitment that he'll have somebody there. If we have somebody there, then it, we'll be hearing about this from Public Works themselves, and that will take all the confusion out. So, I think, you know, if we're going to kick this back to Waterways, that's, that obviously would be, I think would be good. Who's going to be the rep? Is it Mike Nimitz or Rodriguez?
It's me, Mike Rodriguez. He actually wants to do this.
So, we can meet with him, and then he can bring it back, if y'all want to do that. No?
No, don't, that's fine. She's happy. Hang on just a minute, because Commissioner Pickens had his, are you done, Mr. Rawls?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Pickens?
I agree with pretty much everything that's been discussed here, but I do think probably, that we probably need to hear from them more often in shorter updates than rather, you know, once a year or once a, twice a year or something like that. So, but I do think it needs to go back to them to look at it. And by all means, the Waterway Trails, the Trails Committee needs to be involved in the recommendations to us as the Parks and Recs is involved in making recommendations to the board. That's why we have those people there. And I know they're all very passionate about this mission of completing these trails. So, but I think, you know, more updates would probably be better in, at the workshops.
I agree. Thank you. Linda, I'll let you come up one more time if you don't.
I'm just sort of questioning, just looking at the fact that the applications for TAP are due January 15th. What we were asking for during this meeting was a resolution to bring back to the board the final approval, execution for the applications in the next, I guess, Transportation Workshop Committee. So, I'm just trying to logistically look at, our Waterways and Trails Committee meeting is December 10th.
Correct.
When is the next Transportation Workshop?
Two weeks later.
Well, possibly not in December, but we might can move that up a week. So, let's kind of be fluid on that one. But I would say go ahead and meet on December 10th.
So, if we were to bring this back and bring, and hopefully have Mike there and have a formal resolution, whatever, and to say, these are the two projects that we'd like to see brought forward for the TAP application, we would still have enough time to get it in by January 15th? Because otherwise, it's a whole year.
We would have time. But I'd rather go back to committee and come out of that way and bring it to us, okay?
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, Mr. Rawls.
We could have an emergency meeting before the 10th meeting.
We can do whatever we need.
So, if y'all, if y'all want to do that, I would not be opposed to that. So, we would be prepared for the eighth.
We'll be.
B O C C workshop, if need be.
We'll be ready. Mr. Turner?
Yeah, just to make sure that I'm understanding, Mr. Chairman, the request today is to be able to send in a TAP grant application for later down the road. They're not asking for, and as long as it does not include this trailhead, I don't have any problem moving it forward today, because all they're asking for is the opportunity to turn in for a grant to come in and pave this area other than this trailhead that I'm not for by the park. But other than that, if you exclude that trailhead, I'm willing to move this forward today. I don't think they need to have another meeting or do whatever for that portion of just asking for a grant. We always have the opportunity to turn that grant down whenever it comes in.
Okay.
So, I move that we, that we allow them to go ahead and move forward with the TAP grant application with the exception of the trailhead by the park.
Correct.
I would second that.
So, you're talking the spring, what they call the Springside Trail expansion through the, through the park, and then the new one on Curry Road and all that. Those two trail connectors.
Yes, sir. That's my motion.
A second.
Okay, all right. We have a proper motion, proper second, but discussion. So, what happened to St. John's Avenue? And what happened to the conversation I just had about adding another Curry Road to a TAP application when we have engineering dollars sitting out there at that Francis Park area?
That's all part of it.
So, we had two, and now we're going to add a third one. Is that my understanding?
No.
We had two, we're adding Curry, but subtracting the trailhead.
The trailhead was not a point. Yeah, that's, that just popped up today. That's not. I'm talking about the Sports Complex and St. John's Avenue, and then we added Curry.
The Sports Complex is the first one, and that's the one we, I believe the design is done. We just need the.
So, we engineered that one. So, my question is, we had, we'll send three up. Let's try, I'm going to try to clean this up. No, we're not. Okay, tell me why two.
Two. It's the Springside Trail through the park, and the other one is the one from Curry Road up to connect to the St. John's Trail going out.
But it says St. John's Avenue Bike Path Trailhead?
That's the, that was only the trailhead. That's now gone. That is gone.
I'm with you. So, Commissioner Turner was right. Get rid of the trailhead.
Yep.
And we have two projects that we're going to send up today. Yeah, I'm good with that. Thank you. Okay. Any other discussions from the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, Commissioner Turner.
If I could maybe just make one short comment, please, Mr. Chairman. I just want everybody to understand as part of this deal that if we don't get the TAP agreement, that doesn't mean that I'm on board with paving Curry Road and San Matia versus paving some other roads that needed a whole lot worse, okay? Just, I'm good for the TAP.
All right.
Thank you.
Item B, Mr. Troxell.
All right, sir. This is the agreement, supplemental agreement for the St. John's Avenue Drainage Project. As you know, this has gone through a lot of different hoops throughout, throughout the years. So, we're currently in 90% design for the current St. John's Avenue Drainage Project. And with this, with the D E O grant, some other counties could not execute those grants. They had additional money left to give to us. And so what we want to do is we want to expand the amount of work we're doing on St. John's Avenue for the drainage project. Particularly, when we talked with Five Points Design the other day, I outlined two areas that I think needs to be in this additional $1.8 million. One of them is trying to expand farther down towards the south with the, with the drainage in the center of the road and expand the road a little bit. But the other one is cleaning out the drainage dishes on the, was it the north side? North side. So, they are going to lay all that stuff out, and for that $1.8 million additional, we're going to do, trying to do both of those, those items. But this is just accepting that $1.8 million.
Before I call on the commissioners, I asked you this before the meeting started today. I'm a little confused. We had a, we had a grant, we had a big project, we had grant, we leveraged money against the grant, then that grant, that part was taken away from us, right? The H D M.
H, yeah, that.
Hazardous mitigation?
There were, there were two grants in play here. One of them is the, is the D E O grant, CBDG grant.
Right.
Which has zero dollar match.
Right, exactly.
That one was good.
And then we missed the other one.
Then the other one required a match. And so what we tried to do was leverage the CBDG grant as that 25% match, and that's, that was no bueno. You can't do that.
Okay.
So, that's when we decided, hey, we're not going to even mess with that.
Okay.
That portion of it, because the county doesn't have that 25% match for the remainder of that.
All right, good. Commissioner Turner, you're next.
So, all you're asking for today is accept the additional money that's no cost match to the county and move forward with additional work on that same project.
Yes, sir.
Not as a Phase Two, but as an expanded Phase One.
Expanded, yes. There's, there's no more phases in this project. It is just St. John's Avenue Drainage, and that's it.
Okay, I think I'm good with it. Thank you.
Commissioner Rawls?
So, you've got the yellow arrow, but it looks like the yellow line goes all the way down. Is that going all the way to Moody Road?
It will not, because I don't think there's enough money in there to do that.
So, which way is that water flowing going? Are y'all going to have it where it flows to the west? Because if you don't, if you're trying to make it flow to the east and you only do half of it, it's not going to do any good.
It'll flow, it'll continue to flow to the outfall that we, that we're fixing and then going out towards the, the drainage pond we're building.
Okay. Is there any consideration to College, or Ziegler Drive and College Road? Ziegler Drive is, when you drive down there, all those ditches are full and the culvert pipes are barely exposed. And is that our responsibility or the city's?
I have to look at that. I'm not sure.
Because you've got a, there's a culvert that goes underneath St. John's Avenue at Ziegler.
I can, I can check that, but what we're specifically asking the designer to look at for this additional money is to continue going east down St. John's Avenue as far as we can, but then also, because part of the issue was that the drainage, right away, the ditches on the north side of St. John's Avenue are overgrown with trees.
Oh, yeah?
So, what I want to do is, I said, let's throw this in that project as well. We got that $1.84 million. Let's look at that.
Is there, somebody from Foxwoods Subdivision complained to me about last time they had a lot of flooding in that area. It doesn't drain well, and they're, I know that's in the city, but it's all part of what we're doing here in the same area. I'm good.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Troxell, along those lines, before I move on, right there where it says Viking Street and it goes down to the Skeet Club, I think you're going to have to look at, look at that area because there's a big, there's some big culverts on the east side of that road right there. You can almost park your truck in and not see it. You would have to almost pull up there and look at it, but right there where the runway, see the runway? Road, right there at that intersection, you really need to look at that area.
I showed that to him, and that's, that's what he's talking about.
Yeah.
All that, but the problem they're going to run into is we, they've built medical offices.
I know.
And they've, they've got culverts that are this high and some that are down here, and it's, what are you going to do with that? You and I talked about that. Remember the doctors' offices they've added and all the new driveways?
They're going to curb and gutter.
All right. Can't.
Mr. Chairman, I'm fine with this moving on if you're ready now to the consent agenda.
What do you need from us today? Just consensus, or do you need a motion?
Just, I don't think, I just, I don't think we need anything. We'll probably need a motion later on.
Mr. Chairman, can we just take a vote because we are accepting a large amount of money?
The chair will entertain a motion.
Do you want the motion to read? Terry, do you want the motion to read that we actually pass it today or that we send it to the consent agenda to be passed?
To the consent agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we forward this item to the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Here we have a proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. We're moving that forward to the consent agenda. Countywide drainage improvements.
Okay, a while ago, the board approved four drainage projects throughout the county. We sat down as Public Works and discussed several of these, and there's two of them that we believe we can do in-house. And then, but we would like to add two more back to the, back to the list to be part of the funding that the board approved a while ago. We want to remove Ivanhoe Drive and Trupe Road because we can do those in-house easily enough, but we want to add Ida Boulevard and County Road 207A Edgefield Outfall to that proposed project list for, for county funding for projects.
Mr. Troxell, on page 20 of the agenda, on prioritization number two, Point of Woods Trail and Bull Green have nothing in common. They are miles and miles apart. One's in Palack and one's in Inalackin. So, we, I meant to call you and let you know that that was, that really should be where it said road names. That should be in the Palm Shores. Remember when you first got?
Oh, yep, yep.
Yeah, so that's, Point of Woods is that one that D O T and we've been fighting with, who's going to replace that big culvert across Point of Woods at one time, so. All right, Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really have a problem with taking Trupe Road off of this, but Trupe Road's been going on for two or three times longer than I've been a commissioner.
Oh, really?
Since I've been here.
Yes, and so.
It's going to get done though, isn't it?
Well, they say they're going to do it in-house, but as long as it doesn't get lost in the shuffle when it moves in-house, I'm okay with that. But if it gets, you know, Mr. White out there, I think we promised him on multiple occasions that we were going to do it, and then it never seemed to get done. So, the only thing that I would like as part of this agreement, I have no problem with it, as long as you make some kind of commitment to me that when you say we're going to do it in-house, we're going to do it in-house within the next few months, within the next year, within some kind of a timeframe to where three and a half years from now, we're not still wondering when we're going to do Trupe Road. This has been on the thing for the last nine years. I'm not exaggerating.
No, you're right.
No, that's fair. That's absolutely fair.
Okay.
You're right.
All right, so, yeah, that's all I would say is that I would like a commitment that if it's not done within a year, that you would, you know, at least bring it back and tell us why it's not done within a year, because this man has patiently waited on this for a long, long time.
I agree, totally agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pickens, you're next.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised. I thought the Trupe Road had been done because we haven't talked about this a long time. Mike, how do you determine, real quick, which ones you can do in-house? Because of, and I want this one to get done. It's the Junction Road and Ninth Street, and that's just across a, barely a two-lane road. So, I was just wondering how you determine, because it's a $55,000 one, and I think the, you know, the Ivanhoe Drive is 66. I was just wondering, you know, how you determine what the staff can do and what you need to hire out on Junction.
I know, Philip and Robert got together with Mike and Mike, and they talked about all these projects. And then these were the two that they said that we can do in-house.
Okay.
But I wasn't, I wasn't there. I was, I think, in another meeting, but.
Okay. Do you have any, I guess if we approve these, how, how far out, say, Junction Road would be? Would it be in, you know, next six months of next year, or you have any idea?
Well, it would be within, our goal is to get everything done this year with all, I mean, within this, what I consider fiscal year, so by October.
October of 2021.
Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, yeah.
Okay. All right, that's all.
Mr. Adams, that, you're next.
So, along lines of what Terry was saying, I mean, I think we should put that same criteria in Ivanhoe Drive as well to at least have an update is why it hasn't been done in a year.
Yep.
If that makes sense. I don't, Terry, if you agree with that, but it's good for one. It should probably apply to both.
It should apply to all of them.
You know, it'd be nice, I think you're hearing from the board right now, and, excuse me, I'm sorry, do you mind?
No, no, probably a regular update.
I think it would be nice if you come back to us with some, some projected dates that you really think you can pull this off.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay. You done, Mr. Adams, that?
Mr. Rawls? So, Mike, I put a note down, if you had, how much more money would you need to hire somebody that could supervise a crew? Because a piece of 30-inch by 19-inch elliptical is not hard to install. Running a compactor is not hard. Using a transit's not hard. So, do you need, is it because you don't have that one critical person that can go out there and supervise the crew to do it? Or are you just that short on manpower?
No, we, our drainage crew is now, since we kind of reorganized a little bit, now we have one person in charge of drainage. That's all they do is drainage throughout the county. There's no more zones or anything like that. So, Mr. Adams does all the drainage projects. So, his crew, which is probably the bulk of their crew, because they have a lot of, a lot of general maintenance labors, you know, flaggers, all that stuff. They have a plonk of the crew. Then we have a mowing crew, and we have a grading crew, and a maintenance crew now too. So, we got different, four different crews.
But what would it take to bring these jobs in-house?
All of them in-house?
Or as many as possible?
I had to, I had to look exactly what involved Junction Road or River Y Drive or some of those other ones. Maybe there's more complex stuff there that I'm seeing right now, but.
Is there, is there going to be an attempt in the future to start moving some of this stuff more in-house and being less dependent on the contractors? Because you and I both know that that $55,000 wouldn't be a real number if we, wouldn't be that number if we were doing it in-house.
Correct. I would love to do more in-house, but yeah, it does come down, eventually it comes down to manpower. Because when I, when I take my drainage crew off of cleaning out ditches and putting in a storm pipe for a couple of days.
Okay, so you're saying your drainage crew is cleaning out ditches. What if, what if you had a crew that did this type of work? That was dedicated, how many, how many people would you need and what would, what would it cost?
Again, depends on where it's at, but, you know, you'll need some equipment operators. You need the equipment. You'll need flaggers. You'll need, you need a bunch, bunch of stuff. Drivers for dump trucks. So, you probably need six to eight folks additional.
Right, because this is, this is a quarter of a million dollars right here, and it's only five jobs. And we're saving on the other two jobs. And you and I were out on Milliken Road not too long ago. And that's not even on here. You know, you start thinking about that and, and what the cost savings, not only the cost savings can be, but the efficiency of being able to handle it in-house and not having to wait, um, to get a crew, uh, to get a bid out and get them mobilized and get it done. So it's just, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if there, if there's any, have you, have you thought about the possibility of doing this in-house and having a dedicated crew? Or some, a, a crew that's multiversal, but when it's time to do this work, they jump on it.
Oh, that's kinda what we do now. Again, we take our drainage crew for the most part and then instead of doing, uh, cleaning out drainage ditches throughout the county, we'll.
So we gotta keep cleaning ditches.
I, I, I get it, but, but you're talking multiverse. That's, that's what it is.
Yeah.
So that's what we, that's what we.
So what would, what would it take if, if you, if you could wave a magic wand, how much money would you need to hire that crew? Cause you have the equipment.
I have the equipment. You're talking six to, six to eight folks. I'd, I'd have to do the math, but.
What would that save a year, you think, if we did it in-house?
I, I, I can't answer that right now, but it, it could, could potentially save some, some money, but, uh, what we're talking today is, uh.
That's the biggest, the biggest question or the biggest concern that people have been coming to me with lately, especially all the rains that we had, um, at the end of the summer is drainage and culverts, um, you know, especially in the Boswick area. So I'm just wondering if there's a chance that we could put a crew together and tackle more of it and not have to wait till next year to get some of that done. Because we are losing ground, literally.
Again, it's, it, it's money, uh, it was under money and, and, and able to hire, hire folks.
Is it what, you know, you guys haven't been down Milliken Road probably in a while, but when Mike and I were out there, there's, one of the people met us said that there's two old Army Corps ditches that were dug. Some, they were hand dug apparently. Um, did you guys ever make any, any head with that?
We can't find it. We've done a little bit of research, but, uh, we haven't found any, uh, old Army Corps, uh.
We're trying to figure out how to get rid of this water in the middle of Milliken Road. It's gotta go somewhere and all the rains that we had, it literally piled up over the top of the road by about 18 inches. So, you know, of course the folks out there are upset. The mail service, um, said they weren't running anymore. Buses, buses weren't running through it. Um, and, you know, I was thinking then, and as we were coming back down Westover, I was pointing out culverts to him, you know, that, that are gonna have to be replaced at some point in time. And I'm, I know they've, they gotta be like that all over the county.
They are.
So I think, well, you guys don't have culverts in the west end. You're high and dry.
We do, we do. Oh, right.
Depends on what state it's in.
Okay, are you?
But, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, um, I don't think we need to grow government. I think we need to do whatever we can in-house with the people that we already have and then sub out whatever you think you can't handle in-house. I think that's a perfect way to, to, uh, look at it. I mean, if we wanted to, we could double the size of Public Works and still have plenty of projects for everybody to do. So I, I think we still need to do what we can in-house by, by Public Works' opinion and then sub out whatever you think you need to move out to keep the timeframe being, to keep it being done in the timeframe that you think it needs to be done in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Turner, and that was gonna be my comments. I think, you know, I don't wanna see us grow departments when we don't. And if we can put private contractors to work, you know, I think here's the problem, Mr. Troxel, and I'm not, I'm not picking on you by no means. But these are just kinda cost estimates. We haven't really went out to bid to see if we put them out to XYZ excavating and they came back with a price of, I'll do all of them for 180,000, that, that's a great deal.
Hmm.
But, but right now, we're just kinda going, well, we don't really know yet. And I think, I don't wanna be in the business of putting things out to bid if we're not serious about putting them out to bid. But I don't think we really know the cost until we put them out to bid to see if there's a private, a local private contractor that might be very well hungry and wanna do some of these jobs. So, you know.
We have an idea. Uh, we, Phillip and the folks know what it costs to, to, to put a drainage culvert in. So I believe these are good costs that we have. It's, it's not, it's not a, just a pie in a, in the sky of gas.
Well, I wasn't dis, I wasn't making a disparaging remark, but.
No, I, I get it, but.
But when you first got here, remember there was a culvert at the end of Holloway Road that had an estimation of $250,000 on it? That's the first time we had seen it and you and I rode out there and I ain't know what. I mean, that's just, there's nothing there, so. Alright, so what do we need to do with this?
Just, uh, just say, you know, if you wanna add those two additional, Ida Boulevard and, uh.
And you're gonna bring back completion of our estimated, estimated start time?
Yes, we will have an estimated completion date for each one of those.
Okay.
For, for ours and the other ones.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we, uh, move this, this item to the next meet, uh, next consent agenda as approved.
Good. I have proper motion, by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any other further discussion? Seeing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Mr. Troxel, the next thing, St. John's Avenue resurfacing from Palm Avenue to CSX.
Yeah, this one's a, again, this is a different one. Uh, we do have, uh, the SCOP agreement, uh, from FDOT. It's a little over a million dollars. Um, we went out, you know, this, this is gonna be a resurfacing project. Uh, when they were doing the, uh, the, the core, core borings for this thing, they saw that there's, with concrete and old brick underneath the road.
Sure.
I was talking with, uh, uh, Mr. Rodriguez today, uh, being as most of this is in the city, uh, hardly any of it's in the county. We have been talking with, uh, the city on, you know, if they can help fund this, uh, this additional work if we wanted to reconstruct the road versus just resurface. If we resurface, more likely the cracks are gonna come, reappear back, back through the, through the asphalt in, you know, five, five, eight years, something like that. Depending, depending on the amount of rain we get, probably. But if we wanna do the full reconstruction, you know, um, Mr. Griffith says there, he has to go in front of his board, but they might be able to pay some of this additional money. Uh, cause right now, um, the, the additional cost of that is well, is a 1.7 million dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, if we do the full reconstruction, that's the cost estimate from the engineers. Uh, and currently if we just resurface it, it's 700, over 700,000 dollars.
How much?
Say that it one more time. Go back.
What was the last number you just?
700,000 roughly.
Additional?
No, that, that's what, if we just resurface the road, I think it's in, it's in the packet here.
It said, it said 700.
Alright, so we have a million dollars and you're saying 700,000 to do the road.
Basically 725,000.
But to do the road completely, it's 1.7.
It is.
On the last page.
1.7, yes.
Mr. Turner?
I think he answered some of my questions. The thing about it is, before we do any commitments, you need to go ask the city. Because the city's not necessarily gonna pitch into this project.
They, they might not, correct.
My, um, I thought that we, and I, and I evidently I'm incorrect, is I thought we only, uh, took over the maintenance of it from Highway 19 to the west. I didn't realize we had, we owned the maintenance of it all the way down from Palm Avenue all the way down to, uh, the railroad crossing. I didn't realize we own it. Do we own it all the way to the river?
No, we don't. We don't own it.
So we just have it all, we, well, actually we don't own it, but evidently someone in the past agreed to do maintenance on it for the city.
I believe so.
So I don't think we own it. So from Palm, from Palm Avenue to the railroad tracks, we have a maintenance agreement that Putnam County will do that.
It's, I think it's one of our interlocal agreements we're going through right now.
Okay, so we got a 1,200,000 in a grant to go do that. So it's gonna cost seven, 700 to, to resurface it.
Correct.
Or it's gonna cost, which we've done several times without too much problem. And it's gonna cost an extra 300 above the grant or four, 500 above the grant?
Oh, uh, almost 700.
Almost 700 above the grant to go in there and rebuild the road.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I'm not for doing that. We've resurfaced this thing several times already. I mean, you can, I don't have a problem with the chairman of, of, or the administration approaching the city to find out are they interested in putting that up, but I'd probably be pretty surprised if they were because they have a maintenance agreement with us that will do it. And I'm, uh, we've resurfaced that road multiple times in the past. And if you ride down it right now, the biggest reason they're having problems with it is because they keep digging holes in the road and they don't compact it before they fix the pavement on top of it. So if they do make a proper repair, they wouldn't have all those holes caving in all the way up and down St. John's Avenue. So, you know, I don't have any problem if the board wants to ask the city, do they wanna participate? But otherwise, I'm not willing to put in the extra money. That's my commission.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Before I go to Mr. Rawls, do we have an interlocal agreement with the city of Palacka on a maintenance agreement on this road? Or was it just one of these feel-good SCOP grants that we said we would apply for and you would get?
We'll look and see, Mr. Chairman. I don't have the answer today, but I do know we have some interlocals with other of our municipalities. I don't know if we have one on this particular section of, of Palacka, but I'll look.
And, and the other thing before I turn over to Mr. Rawls, why isn't the city here with us today having this conversation?
We talked with, uh, uh, we talked with Mike, or, uh, Mr. Griffith and he was gonna try to make it here today, but I don't know if he.
I mean, if I was needing 700,000, I'd sure show up and ask.
But he, he mentioned something about he was gonna try to go from his board and get 500,000 dollars a year out of Better Place Plan on their part to, to help fund this. But, uh, he doesn't know if that can happen either.
And one last thing before, some municipalities, the SCOP grants have been extended from counties to Florida. And there is a pot of money for that. And I know Inalacka got some money to do, um, Francis Street McGill out of that. Why wouldn't this be one of those projects if we don't have a maintenance agreement or any type of interlocal that we just don't say, here to the city of Palacka, here's a million dollars, have fun, do the best you can. And I don't mean that facetious. I'm just saying, you know, we already, we just sat up here and talked about how much work Public Works has to do. You know, we keep going over these lab certified, we go over, we keep monitoring all this stuff when, in fact, we could give it, like the city of, like town of Inalacka hired Midtower and Associates to be their lab certified people to look over those roads. County had nothing to do with that. We have enough to do. That's just my comment. Mr. Rawls? Thank you for being patient.
Um, so if, if, not inclusive of, of engineering that we've already spent to date, you're saying if we throw 700 grand at it now, five to seven years from now, we're gonna be looking at doing that again, correct?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay, and you've got, like, it's showing according to the borings, like eight inches of asphalt in some areas. So this is not gonna be a minor shutdown of St. John's Avenue. It's gonna take quite a while. I know personally having to travel that road and it, I avoid it like the plague because when you turn off of Mosley, I, I, if you ever follow me, you'll know that I know that road because I'm doing this for the first two, literally, I mean, there's some huge potholes. And it, it really messes your car up, so, um, the work needs to be done, but I, I, I just, you know, I don't feel comfortable throwing away 700,000 dollars knowing that we're gonna be right back here potentially five to seven years from now. And this is delaminating. It's not just, the, these potholes are where you're, you've, you've got layer, old layers that are separating from the, um, uh, new layers. And then what is the city gonna do about the, the infrastructure that's under St. John's Avenue? Is there any conversation about replacing any of that water piping? Because they have, um, issues there every now and then where the pipes are breaking, especially right along where Hussin Avenue is.
I haven't talked to them about that, but I will.
So, yeah, I, I think that's important because if, if we, if we, if we go spending money to pave it and then they turn around and cut it up, that's what Commissioner Turner was talking about. And then they don't get, get, get good compaction, they put a patch in there and next thing you know, you're right back where you started. So I, I would be in favor of saying maybe we should table this for right now and, and, um, have a meeting with the city at some point and get a real good plan of action because that, that is a major issue, um, not just a repave that be done.
Well, I think Mr. Suggs was gonna check into that first of all before, but then I agree. Mr. Suggs, you had your hand up.
Well, no, no, I didn't have my hand up, but I'll make a comment. Uh, yes.
You had your mouth to the mic.
I remember when we sat in here with the, uh, city and we held our joint meetings, this, this discussion was part of it, I believe, if, if I'm not mistaken. And I believe at one point in time, there were, uh, there was some discussion about them trying to build up their reserves in order to be able to get the money to help move the infrastructure out of that particular right-of-way. So when we did the project, that there wouldn't be any further cuts and all due to it. But let me go back and check and I don't have an issue meeting with the, uh, with the city manager and, and Mike and I can go or meet with him and, uh, and Mr. Griffith as well and talk, but I'll go back and review those minutes cause I thought I remember something. Of course, it's been a while. And, uh, but let me look at that and see if there was some discussion on that.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, Zach, you had your.
I guess given Mike, your findings and the longevity of the fix, if we just did a fix, I think definitely I agree with Larry. Mr. Harvey, I guess your chairman Harvey, that, um, sorry, I'm getting used to that part of it. I agree with Chairman Harvey that if the city's not here to have a seat in the conversation, I think we do table it until those conversations are done and they, they actually come and represent themselves.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
I'm in total agreement, um, with both, 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 uh, both previous commissioners and we're turning it on and off. I, uh, I think that what we need to do is, is, is authorize our staff to talk to the city staff and come up with where we are, who is responsible.
Mm-hmm, right.
Can we hand the grant off to them and let them do it or is it ours or it has to be handled by us? All those kinda questions. Cause the perfect situation would be, would say, here's the grant.
Yeah.
Go do that, go do that. Uh, that would, I'm with Commissioner Harvey. That would be the perfect situation. But if we can't do that or we're in a jeopardized funding or whatever the case may be, fine. But I'll go on record right now saying I am not willing to put in another 700,000 dollars to fix that road. That's a lot of dirt to pave.
Well, it, are you?
Yes, sir.
Well, if Commissioner Rawls is correct and you start digging up eight inches of road, you don't know what you're going to find down there. And then you start looking at pipes and, you know, that's 700,000 might explode to 1.5 in a heartbeat. We've seen that happen, so.
Yeah, and you need to be very careful.
And, and if, eight, eight inches at the beginning, if they have to replace the base, you're really getting, that's a, it's gonna disrupt the city if something big.
Oh, it's.
Yeah, mill it, get it down best you can. Uh, that would be my boot. Mill it, get it down best you can and, and make it long, last long as you can. Because you can go in there and resurface it for what, two and a half times for what it'd cost to go in there and try to rebuild a road base? And that's not including change orders. I'm absolutely on board with Commissioner Rawls on this one. We do this for a living outside this room. I'll bet you that project, it costs double by the time they got done with it.
You got gas, you got telephone that's underground there, water, sewer.
Yeah.
So are you clear about what the board wants you to do is to get with Mr. Suggs and y'all are clear on?
Yes, sir. I, I think we got it. Yes, sir.
That board was one inch thick.
Alright, good. Then we're gonna move on. Mr. Troxel, are you ready to move on to the next item?
Yeah, the last, last one on the list is, uh, St. John's Avenue Estates or St. John's Riverside Estates. Sorry about that.
Mr. Troxel, do you mind if I go ahead and talk, have Ms. Holland come up? Do you wanna come up now or do you wanna hear what he has to say first? Okay, well, you, I just didn't wanna leave you out on that, so.
Again, during a transportation workshop on, uh, October 27th, uh, we, you asked us to look into, uh, the costs associated with paving, uh, several, several roads down there. What we did is we, we, there was old drawings that you, you, Mr. Turner mentioned earlier and we pulled those out and looked at those and how they were designed. Um, and so we came up with an estimate for, for three roads that were like 1.2 million dollars or 1.4 million dollars. Those, those roads include was it Paradise Point Circle, Paradise Point Drive and Fisherman? Those were the three roads and there were still two left to, to do. But, you know, if we were looking at, you know, what can the county do right away, uh, and maybe phase this project in a little bit, was, uh, the paving of those, those three roads. Uh, one, cause they, the Fisherman comes right off of, uh.
Horse Landing.
Horse Landing, yeah. Still, still learning the roads around here myself, but, uh, so that's, that's what we did. We looked at that and that's gonna roughly about 1.2, 1.2 million dollars for, for that. However, that was based on a 24-foot wide asphalt road. Currently, the dirt road that's sitting there now is about 20-foot wide. But one thing we need to keep in mind when we do this, most of this cost is not asphalt. It's, it's drainage, to improve the drainage down there. But when we were looking at the design that they did do, um, they were cutting the road a little bit and cutting the ditches deeper. And that, that whole area is roughly anywhere between two to four foot above normal water level. And so if you're cutting two-foot ditches along the side of the road, it is gonna stay wet continuously. It's not gonna work. So what we did is we went back to ask, uh, the designer that, that designed this, these roads, uh, you know, what would it cost to have kinda redesigned these roads for a 20-foot wide pavement space instead of 24 and then do some additional drainage stuff? And then do some additional drainage stuff in there. Uh, they came back and said that they're so full right now, they can't, they couldn't touch it until March. If we wanted to, if we wanted to go back to them for maybe an additional redesign and looking at some other stuff. So they could, they could, it would cost us more money. I don't have a cost estimate yet because we just talked with them. But they said they can't even touch it until March because they're, they're, they're full. But with that said, what I wanna talk about is, you know, what what we wanna do is is the county, um, to, do we wanna look at paving these roads? Do we wanna look at um, maybe building this up with lime rock instead? Part of me says, hey, you know, these things are only two foot above normal water level. I don't think asphalt's gonna last more than eight to ten years if we asphalt these roads. I think we might be better off on some of these roads, uh, maybe not all of them, but some of them, just going with a uh, building up a lime rock base road versus asphalt. Now, there are several asphalt roads I think we could get by with, which is Fisherman and Paradise Point and Paradise Circle. Those, I think, would would let themselves, they're not as low as as some of the other ones there. Was it Edge, Edgefield or whatever? Edgewater and Creekside, I think? But anyways, that was just the discussion amongst the, the commission on what what we think we should do.
Before I send it off, Paradise Circle down there where the water plant was, and the last hurricane and the full moon and the high tide and the northeastern that was blowing, the perfect storm down there. My understanding that road was underwater for quite some time. So you're right, if you start just digging ditches and get to the two, you're gonna have the same problem there as you have in front of my house where the ditch and the wa, the lake is the same, the same waterline. So you're not really passing it. So what can we possibly do, even if we, even if we had shorter ditches, how can we move that water around? I mean.
It's especially when it's that low, it's hard to get the water back to the river where it where it wants to go because it's just so shallow there. There's ways, there's where the old uh, water plant was that we can, we could make that a a storage area for water for a little bit. But it's still gonna be hard because of the the elevation of all those roads there.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
At some point, uh, I wanna start moving this forward as I can. But I don't see where we can find one point four million dollars all at one whack when it's not on the pave list for next year. And the pave list next year's already been expended. So could we start, and if Midhour and them can't get to this until sometime in March to even look at it again, is there any way that we could maybe commit to going in there and building all this? I'm not talking about just the main, the main uh, Paradise Point Fisherman, but every one of these roads in that whole corner, could we go in there and build them up with like, I don't mean fill the potholes with some lime rock. I mean go in there and build, rebuild these roads up to twenty-foot width about, you know, maybe four or six inches deep where they have a good road base and they don't, every time it rains, that that everything doesn't go away with one thunderstorm in an afternoon if we. That's part of the problem is if we, if we go in there and we uh, we grade today and they get a thunderstorm, it doesn't take a lot of rain, just a thunderstorm, then a lot of those roads become almost impassable. So I was wondering if maybe we could start by a commitment that we would rebuild the roads and then we could keep an eye on what that does. If that lime rock starts floating and melting away, we know we got more problems other than just rain. We got groundwater issues, especially down on the end towards Dunn's Creek. If it's gonna start melting that stuff away, you can't pave over top of it. If you do, then it's just gonna melt it right out from underneath it and the pavement's gonna go away. So, you know, I think I would like to start with trying to go in there and rebuild all the roads and then, and then that'd give us time to get it maybe on the pave list for uh, Fisherman's and Paradise Point, if we could keep the other roads good for now. And we could start monitoring, will, will lime rock even hold up? Because if we don't test it first, it could just wipe out our, our spending money on paving down on the far end. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Rawls?
And that whole area of there, not, not just these three roads, but the whole area is, is in the same shape. And I've often wondered, you know, where, you have, you have a, an area like that, if if there was, this is, this one had, had or has an MSBU, correct?
No, no, this is not.
Okay, if it did, one of the things that that doesn't get taken care of is cleaning out of culverts that go across under driveways. That's a huge issue. Um, people go out there, they mow the grass, they throw the clippings in there, it builds up organics, and next thing you know, you don't have any, any flow. So, you know, my, my concern is you, you build the road up six inches and then we run a grader down it. And the lime rock goes in the ditches. And so how, how, how are we gonna mitigate that? Because you're talking about a very short-term fix if you build the roads up, if we don't, if we're not able to control the, the um, uh, the material from getting in the ditches in the future.
Well, if it was lime rock roads, you're gonna get some, some washout. I mean, it's just gonna happen. Hopefully, our, I'm working with Ring Power to get some training for our grader operators so they can pull a shoulder a little bit better than they currently do. But even with that, if they were pulling a shoulder properly, you're still gonna get some, some washout out of lime rock into the, into the drainage ditch. And then it'll eventually go through the crossbow culverts, driveway culverts, and you'll have to, and it'll, it'll still plug up.
I understand if a may, Mr. Chairman, I don't know.
Well, so if you, if you, if you did build up the six inches and you had a two-foot ditch, you got two foot six now, a high-water event, you're gonna be right back where you started.
You're gonna be, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, what, what is the permanent cure? If, 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 you know, paving's not gonna be an option because that's gonna wipe out the paving. If you chip seal it, it's gonna crack and go away. Uh, is, is there any viable option that's long-term for that area? Because that whole area is like that. My, I have an aunt and uncle that live down there and.
There is, there is no long-term fix. I mean, you build the whole, whole thing up, which, you know, unless you're in UAE and on Dubai and and have the money to do that and make islands out of something, uh, you're not gonna be able to, to fix that. Just how, how do we, how do we manage it is, is the question.
What are options?
Just uh, again, the options are building up the road a little bit, little bit higher with with a nice lime rock base. Or or, and then maybe asphalting in the future, but still, it's, it's just a, it's, then there begins a maintenance, maintenance thing for us.
If you, if you chip sealed it, would there be any advantage to that?
I, I don't.
Not have to grade it?
You, you wouldn't have to grade it right away, but again, with a chip seal, uh, with, with the depth of where it's at in the water infiltration we come through there, the chip seal will go away probably within a year. And then you're, then it's, then it's hard to grade a chip sealed road. You then have to do it all over again.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Yes, I uh, I don't really see a better option than what was just presented. I understand that uh, that we wanna look at all from every direction we can, I get that. But and in most situations of of this nature, I would be the first on board to say things like, yeah, there's not an MSBU here. Or I might be the one to say, you built your house on a dirt road, now go live on a dirt road and leave me alone. I get it. And this case is different. These people were promised three years, four years ago, this road would be paved. It was on the pave list. That makes it different to me other, because they have already been placed there. And because of the water and sewer, they were removed from the pave list. And now it's put in, it's my understanding, that the main trunk lines are put in. It's only right to start moving in that direction. I'm not saying stroke a check and pave the whole area all at one time. I'm saying let's go in there and do substantial repairs such as some, the lime rock thing and test it and see how it works out and do what better. If we decide to pave, we can reuse all that lime rock, that'll be the base for the new road. So it'll give everybody a substantially good road, much better than they have now, until such time as we can get some of it on the pave list. And you can test and see if the lime rock's gonna go away in those areas where you're concerned of paving them. Because the last thing we wanna do is if we put lime rock down there and it dissolves and goes away from the water, is to go pave it because then all it'll do is just dissolve underneath and it'll all go away anyhow.
Fills up the ditches though, right.
Yeah, so thank you.
Mr. Adams, Zach?
I'm gonna agree with both of them. Um, I, I think that to pave it is a little bit premature understanding the history of wanting it paved because it was on the list. Um, that was before my time. But the idea of it washing out if you paved it, that seems more dramatic than if you had lime rock there. And kinda you could, you could still repair that. My ask to you would be, given the input that I've, I've heard regarding this and watching meetings and stuff, and again, I wasn't on the board when we were talking about it. But um, my ask to you would be, Mr. Troxell, how do we maybe increase the maintenance cycle? Because that's been one of the big concerns I heard from that community while I was obviously campaigning to be sitting here. Is there a way that if we did go limestone route, which is gonna be cheaper, it's gonna be potentially easier to fix because it's a more flexible ashtray, you just bring some more in and and grade it if we can grade it properly? How can we commit possibly to a different level of service, given the savings we're having by not paving it? I think maybe that would be an alternative is to, to increase level of service in that location based on the geography, how low the ground is and things like that. Understanding we have road ratings, one, two, and three, but maybe this is a one plus in lieu of paving, something like that. I don't know if that's a possibility, but.
Uh, it can, kind of what we're doing now until we can get through this is we're actually gonna hit that a little bit more often with a grader and add material to this. Uh, but then again, we only have six graders and they're out throughout the county every day, uh, grading roads. So the more we spend time here, the less we spend time somewhere else.
I understand Mr. Adams' act to say that we could have the grader out of his district.
That is exactly what you said, exactly. That's what I heard.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, I, a little levity goes a long way.
Well, we got all the other equipment in Mr. Pickens' district, so, no. But, you know, and for the short term, that's, that's the proper way for us to do it. And that's what we're gonna, that's what we're doing now is we're gonna try to hit that a little bit more often, but.
So when we, we spoke the other day, there, there is a seventh grader that they don't use that often, that's like the backup grader. Maybe that's the solution.
It's still personnel.
Okay, next one, Mr. Rawls.
Land planners, would that not be a better, we have five land planners, correct?
Gateway box blades for the back of the tractor, is that what you're talking about?
I thought we bought land planners a couple of years ago.
Leveling blades, yeah, leveling.
Leveling blades, I, wow. Yeah, they're on back tractor, but they're not.
I, when I was talking to press, I, I said, the, the blades you're talking about, the land planner, said, yeah, there is a square, like a square box, maybe five, five by six foot. Okay, would that not be a better um, solution than putting a, a full-blown grader out there for those twenty-foot roads? And be able, it's much easier to mobilize and you're much quicker.
It depends. I mean, now there, there, some of the roads like down across the river on the other side of seventeen, where the roads are a little shorter, uh, those, those make sense. But I think where we're talking about now, I think the grader is, is, is good.
The land planners don't, they're not gonna put anything in the ditches. They're just gonna run it out flat, fill the, fill the holes and keep on trucking.
Well, if they do the grading right, they won't put it in the ditches either. Uh, they'll pull it up to the center and then grade it, but.
I, I, it's, I, it's not that I have any faith in that, I just haven't seen it and. We can, we can get to that point, that sure would be nice.
You done?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, I was with Commissioner Rawls, I was wondering if the leveling blades would be, you know, work better in that situation? Or you could send those out, you know, more often than the grader? Because we've got a couple of, you know, subdivisions in Crescent City, that I think honestly, the grader every other time and then use the leveling blades more would be, I think it would be just as effective. I'm not that familiar with these roads, but I know that they were promised to be paved, so I think we need to, we need to keep pushing these forward, as Commissioner Turner says. I assume if we do go with building them up, because it sounds like that has to be done either way, that you'll start improving the, the drainage as you build these roads up?
Yes.
Working on the drainage at the same time?
More, more, my guess is, and we haven't priced it out yet, but the drainage piece is probably gonna be cost a little bit more than the, than the building up of the roads. It's just, the drainage needs to be addressed there.
Is there anything other to build it up other than lime rock or shell rock? Is that all the two choices you have?
There's always other options and we can, we can get, uh, you know, gravel or 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 something, you know, and then put lime rock on top of it. Uh, I know gravel's more expensive down here, you know, from Ohio. We don't have lime rock or shell rock, it's always gravel, it's number fifty-seventh and three or four and some other stuff that we use up there, but uh, it's a little bit bigger aggregate, it gives you a little bit better base. But then you top it with a, maybe a lime rock. Uh, I don't know how much that'll cost. Gravel down here is a lot more expensive than it is, is in Ohio. So we can look at, uh, maybe a couple inches of gravel, lime rock top, uh, cap of lime rock and see how that works. Uh, there's some other ways to do it. But again, four to six inches, uh, raising the road up, it's gonna be that way when, when we pave it anyways, you know, if we go to pave these roads, it's gonna be built up another four to six inches anyways.
Yeah. Um, I need a button, by the way.
Why? You speak anytime you want, that's why you have that gavel. See, it works like this.
I know I liked to break the glass earlier, remember?
It's not gonna make it to year.
I like the idea, yeah, that's the way I hit it this morning. I like the idea though, because we've kinda been talking about this for many years about roads that we know are gonna come up to be paved, that we could start working on those bases now and getting those done. But I, I wanna ask you because I was in a meeting with DOT people years and years ago when they were building Highway twenty through Nine Mile Swamp. And I'll just tell a quick story, the guy comes in late and they said, well, what's the matter? Why are you late? And he goes, well, we had water coming up through the road. And I think I might have told you this when we were traveling around one day. And they came over and they put some kind of a covering over the road and then paved over that to divert the water that was trying to come up through the road. And I guess it's working because it's not coming up through the road anymore.
Like a geotextile or?
It could have been something into that. I don't know what they used, but they had to divert the water coming up out of the swamp. And they did that with some type of a covering over that. So I think my point is this. I'm in agreement with everybody that we need to build that road up and do the drainage first and see if the, the lime rock holds. And then maybe we could look at some type of covering over that before we ever put asphalt down. And that might, that might maintain it. But again, we're gonna be looking at the same problem I'm having. The water in the ditch is the same level as the water in the lake. How do you deal with that? And you don't. You just don't deal with it. There's no place down there, there's no empty lot that we can build a storage place, even though we have one down at the end of Paradise Point, that was underwater. And that's why we went to get the sewer. That's why Commissioner Turner worked very hard to get that septic to sewer down there. Yes, septic to sewer. So, I mean, if we had a big area that we could just flood that whole area, all that drainage in, but we don't have that. We have the river, but we can't just, we're already level. So there, Mr. Turner, your next.
My concern with the fifty-seven stone under the lime rock, I think it helps a lot if you're trying to keep the water from going through or you're needing a more solid base. But when you have hydraulic pressure from underneath picking up on it, I don't think, I think it's gonna actually degrade the ability if you use part of it instead of the lime rock. And so, you know, I don't think in, in a high-water area such as that, that it would do, it would help us to put fifty-seven stone down. It, it wouldn't stop the hydraulic pressure from the bottom moving up, it just wouldn't stop that. So, you know, I, I, I like this conversation that everybody's trying to come up with their experiences and things they've learned from what they do and, and what have you. But that's my opinion. I don't think fifty-seven stone will help in that particular instance.
Have you guys worked with any geotextile, putting it down?
Yeah.
They, they got a map that you can put down, it's called Bent Knight. And I'm sure there's a lot more of them other than that one brand name of it or whatever. But it's more expensive than if we just went on and let it pave, it paved it on out. I just used it under some pits that aren't very big at all, five foot wide, and it was like eleven hundred dollars for five foot wide by seventeen foot long area. So, you know, you start adding that to a bunch of roads, it's gonna be a bunch of money. I don't know that we couldn't pave it three or four times for what it'd cost to put the Bent Knight down. So, you know, I just, I, I don't know, we just don't need to go on and try to find the money. Start as you can, uh, add lime rock to it and just keep on going whenever you have time. If you don't have time because we, you're too busy on other projects, this might be a big enough project that we need to start looking at maybe subbing it out to another guy to go in there. Because every one of them paving companies have the ability to haul lime rock, spread it and pack it with rollers and do the real thing where we don't even have any rollers in the house. So I, I don't know that this isn't one of them, we don't need to start getting some pricing on like Fisherman's and Paradise Point and, and the three goes off to the right, just get them all done and we'll just start biting it off as we can chew on it and, and see where we can get.
Because I, I believe we could do all of those roads and build them up thicker than. Cause I, I believe we could do all of those roads and build them up thicker than, than just paving those three, uh, right away. I think we can get all that done.
Yeah, for probably a lot less money, yeah.
Mr. Rawls?
I'd like to see a cost on what it, the cost to put geo fabric down ahead of the, the lime rock. It, it would be very easy to do, because they do, they'll do it on a unit basis. I agree with Commissioner Turner, if you're not backgrilling it, you're just wasting our time. Uh, I think that is the biggest problem, is we just throw down loose material, great, knock it down with a grader, and then it rains that day and somebody's car runs through it and they're pushing it all out of the, out of the road. Is there, is there a possibility that we could set up an MSBU in that area?
I don't believe it would pass, Commissioner, it's been talked about in the past, uh, with the fifty five or seventy percent or whatever, I don't think you could get it to pass, or sixty or whatever the percentage is now. The last time we discussed this, I actually asked Nilda to come over and be present in the room to, to do this, but I've talked to multiple residents in the area that have no, I guess it offends the hell out of them that they, that they've got to pay for it at this point after being promised four years ago that it was gonna be paved. You know, maybe if they'd have started with an MSBU four years ago, then it might've, it might've would've passed at that time.
My point is, if we went to them and said, okay, we're gonna pave your roads, and then you're, we're done, and the roads failed five years later. Then, then, then where are we? And, and that's what we're looking at is, you know, I don't know who promised them they're gonna be paved, but.
They were on the paving list.
But, but it was, I, I, I mean, it, it was probably done out of ignorance, because I, I can tell you right now, my uncle lives on Walt Lane, and if it rains just a half an inch, the place is a soupy muddy mess. Um, every, every road getting down there looks like that. And, and then when you have high water conditions, which we've had, what was that, that huge moon or whatever the moon was they had this year that brought the water in? Um, man, the, the water was almost over his bulkhead. Um, so, and, and Commissioner Harvey's right, it's, it's almost, you can stand back and see the ditch water. If you stand at the end of the road and you got, um, Dunn's Creek down there, it's almost like they connect, so that's not gonna change.
We have the same thing down in, in Wacken and Sportsman Harbor and stuff, it's, they're at water level, like, there's nothing I can do, I can't, uh.
How do we explain that to the residents? That we, we weren't a quagmire. I mean, if we went out there and fixed your roads today and they wash out tomorrow, then what do we do? You know, so I, I think we should go to the residents out there and ask for help, because um, ultimately, this is gonna be paid for with tax dollars, whether it's Better Place Plan money, or we can somehow get a grant, or we pay for it out of, um, out of our, uh, gas tax. The money's gonna come from somewhere, but we don't wanna waste, just like St. John's Avenue, you know, who wants to throw down seven hundred thousand dollars and watch it get torn up seven years later?
Commissioner Adams, Zach?
I just think, I hate that thing. I just think that, um, if we go to the residents and present things, we should present them both options, right? The possibility that if we build a paved road, that it could just be a washed out mess in five, three years, five years, I mean, your range is from three to five years, and if we have a, a hurricane or something, it could be sooner. And make sure we lay out the fact that if you, the idea, cause I don't know if it's factual or not, cause we won't really know unless it's the lime rock washes out. Um, the idea of the lime rock and a, a higher rate of maintenance plan, whether that's subcontracting, like Mr. Turner was saying, I believe, or otherwise.
Commissioner Turner?
Is Fisherman, real quick, is Fisherman, the, like, the worst case scenario, the most vulnerable road to wash out down there?
We're gonna ask that in just a minute. Commissioner Turner?
I think that, uh, if you went in and started like we talked about, and you started laying down lime rock base, and you started laying it down on Fisherman's and on Paradise Point that goes down towards Dunn's Creek, and then start working on it around the back, and as we can, build up the center roads, because they, let's not forget, they have problems too.
Oh, absolutely, they're, they're probably worse, actually.
And so if we go in there, and I understand the part, but if we start walking away from, cause they're affected by the river, then we're gonna walk away from a lot of roads in this community. Federal Point, all the stuff at Dunn's Creek, all the stuff on the other side of the bridge, all the stuff all the way down Carlin, all these different, we're gonna just walk away from them is what's gonna fixing to happen. And so, you know, my point here is, is that we need to go on and start moving in a proper direction and fix these roads, because all it takes is an afternoon thunderstorm and they're gone away. So, the people were promised in there. By who, or whether it was ignorant or not, they were promised, and I don't think it was out of ignorance, I think it was out of trying to do the right thing for a community. So, um, I believe that, uh, we need to go on and start moving in the right direction, and this commissioner thinks the right direction is to fix these roads with lime rock substantially, and then at that point, start te, seeing if they're gonna wash out or flood out or whatever. It may be that part of this road needs to stay on the back end down towards the creek, it may need to stay lime rock forever. Because there's no sense in paving that area if it's just gonna go away over a, a short period of time. But those are the kinda tests that we won't know until we put lime rock in there.
All right, real quick, cause I wanna get to Ms. Holland, uh, Mr. Rawls?
So, the question I was asking is, along those lines, if we, if we picked Fisherman and did Fisherman, fix the drainage as best as possible, put in the lime rock base, and if geo fabric is something that we.
Commissioner, I don't think your microphone's on.
Your what?
Your microphone wasn't on.
Did you get what I said? So if we started with Fisherman, and, and, and get it built up, get the drainage fixed as best you can, um, would that be a good test base?
Oh, absolutely, it would be a good test base.
It really wouldn't though, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, it really wouldn't, because the Fisherman is not close to the creek, you'd have to go down Paradise Point.
Yeah, it'd be one of the lower ones, yes.
Get down there to, to do the test.
Pick the, pick the worst case, um, and we'll know by March, because that's, in March, April, we're gonna start getting rains again. And, um, then, then come back and, and take a look at it, cause I, I know, you, your back is up against the wall, you're dealing with a low lying area, and like you said, you're not gonna build an island and build it up, so. I, I don't have a problem spending the money on it, but my, my biggest concern is that if we don't go in there and get it compacted and, and, um, get the ditches cut, it's gonna all just wash in the ditches and we've just wasted our energy.
And that was part of the issue with the original design, they had, they had a pretty deep ditch, and it was below water level. Uh, it, it wasn't gonna work, uh, that's why we had to, wanted to go back and, and look at it again.
All right, Mr. Adams, Zach?
I just wanna say, I think we're all saying something very similar, so I think we're very close to, to the, saying the same thing, just a matter of what order you go about implementing it. So, I'm open to anything that any of us have said. Whether we implement it one road at a time as a test, or we do it all as one big mass thing, and then hopefully it, the only thing we risk is success and the fact that if we do put limestone down and the community is satisfied, that's success right there. Based on maintenance levels, so we do risk doing successful thing without spending the money to, to pave everything. I mean, that's, that's the risk. Which I don't think that's a risk, I think that's, I'm not positive.
And I would love it, you know, if, if the lime rock holds, I'd love to go back and pave those roads.
Commissioner Turner?
Well, I think that we're still gonna have to pave that area, and I still think it's a prime, uh, prime pave, uh, prime project to put on the pave list for next year, um, but I think we should go in there and run these tests and put in this lime rock and fix these roads and do the things that need to be done. I understand that the county doesn't own a roller, not even a rubber tired roller.
We, we have one roller, we do, we do have one roller, but.
Okay, well, we need, we need one, well, if it's real small, then it isn't big enough for this, so. You know, it may be that we, this is one of those projects, if we're not properly equipped to make it live long enough, once we put it down, that we need to go ahead and seek some outside help with it, and then we just got a project we can turn loose if we could, especially if you could bid it in stages with alternates and what have you, and you, you know, do Fisherman's and Paradise Point, and then maybe you could do some of the other ones as alternates, and we'll just bite off as much as we think we can fund and go on and get it done.
I agree.
So that would be my suggestion.
I'm gonna call Ms. Holland up now.
Perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Holland. You've been very patient out there and I appreciate it, although you have been directing, I saw that.
Sue Holland, one fifteen Creek Side Road, thank you, gentlemen. Our big problem when you come in off horse landing on Fisherman, the holes that are there, that's why people complain immediately, but the rest of Fisherman is fine, it's only when you come off horse landing, but if you move the pavement, then we're gonna have those same holes are gonna happen at the end of that pavement, so keep that in mind. All of Fisherman does not need paving. It just needs to be repaired right when you come off the pavement. The two worst roads, I think Mike will attest, to are Creekside and Edgewater. And yes, when we get a storm, a hurricane, or we get the full moons and the king tides, as they're called, yes, we get a lot of water, but right now, we have a lot of water. They did dig out the ditches on my street, and they're full of water, and when they opened our culverts, all the water came out from under the culverts too. Um, our yards are wet, we can't mow our grass right now, cause everything's wet. When we get a hurricane, praise God, I bought on this side, it comes to my backyard, halfway in my backyard, and all of that is underwater completely for three weeks. So, if we do an MSBU, I think it is what you call it, you said it would only last eight to ten years, we don't wanna pay for that either, as homeowners, so. Um, I am in agreeance with, yeah, put some limestone, pack it tight, and drop the speed limit to ten, especially for the garbage trucks, because they are the ones that are the first ones who tear it up, right after a paved job. Their trucks are big and heavy, and I have video of them going down, I purposely videoed them, so that you guys can see. It's not the homeowners, cause we wanna keep it nice, you know, it's everybody else. We get a lot of tourists, because we're on the water, and we, you know, being a realtor, I know. People come looking for places to buy. So, yeah, let's do the limestone, let's try it, but don't try it on Fisherman, don't try it on Paradise, that's gonna be underwater always, because that circle is very low. Um, try it on the two roads that are the worst, I'm begging for our roads, because Brian Hilges at one twenty, I'm gonna speak for him, they literally drove around the mud bog into his beautiful grass, and he is furious. And again, Mike went out there and saw this, it's, he thankfully has a tractor and he pulled three people out, and they called me. I'm not the liaison for our neighborhood, but here I am, poking at you guys. Um, what are we gonna do, what are we gonna do, what are we gonna do?
Well, they see you on TV and you're a personality now, and.
I have not a personality to be here, though.
Yeah, you are the queen.
I am, I'm, I'm, yeah, and I'm in the paper, so I'm a celebrity now, let's pave the roads, but, um, if it's not gonna work, don't do it. We do pavers, I'm not telling you to pave, use pavers, because drainage goes through it. We need to get the water to move, but I'm not saying putting something that's gonna hold the water in the road, that's gonna make it worse. We need to make it go away. The trees need to be trimmed, because the sunlight's not getting there to dry it. I keep saying trees, ditches, lime rock. I think that'll fix the problem, but I'm not an engineer of roads at all. I, I don't know anything, lower the speed limit.
I think we're all saying what, exactly what Commissioner Turner, I, I'm, I'm in agreement. We, we need to do something down there, we can't bite the whole apple at one time, so how do you, eat an elephant, you bite it?
One bite at a time, absolutely.
So why don't you come up with a plan, Mike, and work with Commissioner Turner, he's the commissioner in that district naturally? And let's get this thing, let's bite off a little bit at a time and see what we can't do successfully. If it's trimming the trees back to get the sunlight down, if it's creating the limestone down, cause all we're doing is preparing for paving, and I agree, if we're successful in this matter, then we clap our hands. If we're not successful, then we find something else, or we go, it's just not going to work there. But we also, I'm in agreement too. I think the lands have changed, you and I've talked about that, lands have changed, water is, if you drove by my house, you're gonna think, oh, that luscious grass, it looks so nice. You can't mow it, you put the big mower out there and you get stuck. I mean, I tell people, don't pull in too far, cause it looks nice, but it's not dry. And, and we haven't had that much rain. I mean, we really, a couple inches last week, all week, and we were so wet, it wasn't even funny, so I think things are changing.
We just need a drought, so if you could talk to Mother Nature with these storms, would be good. Let's go back for a drought. It'll dry us up, that'll make the problem go away.
Then it goes from mud to sand and dust, we catch it both ways.
Well, we're better with the washboard, actually.
And you know what you'll be in here asking for, the same as for, they want water trucks on the road to water it down, so they don't have the.
Uh, we didn't ask for that ever.
But you will when you have.
No, I won't. I won't. It's, it's the mud and the sinking and.
What about money?
So what I'm hearing about, what I'm hearing, Mike, you're gonna start trying to put a plan together really soon and bring it back to us, like, really, really soon, to start making this happen, cause, yeah.
Yeah, maybe you can put a bid spec together and go ahead and bid it out, cause I know, and just do alternates, and I know we wanna try to do probably work our way from the back to the front, but I think at the very least, we need to do Paradise, or this whole test doesn't mean anything at all. So maybe we can get enough of that done, depending on what the pricing is.
There is also drainage at the end of Edgewater that Mr. Buckles filled in on one of those properties. So there is a pipe that goes into the river, but it's filled in.
It's probably under the water in the river.
Uh, well, I don't know, but, uh, so Mr. Buckles now bought at the end of, uh, Creekside on my street, and your guys will tell you, he filled in the ditch already, and so they had to dig it out. So, you know, you got people who think that they can, cause there's a pipe at the end of my road that goes straight into, uh, the canal, but it's not, it's not flowing down out of there. Now, hopefully it will, because they did dig out the ditch, but you have homeowners who think that they know what they're doing too. People who have their own graders who think they know what they're doing also.
Well, some homeowners aren't completely stupid, Mr. Buckles is one of them, I've known him a long, long time.
Well, I'm not saying he's stu-, not at all, not at all, but he did, um, block off that drainage at the end of Edgewater, and, um, Mr. Uh, Mus- Muscle White will tell you that the drain is there, but it's filled in. Uh, as I went door to door, other people have their own drainage in their yards with, um, um, you know, grading, so. To try and get the water out of their yards and back.
Are you, are you satisfied with what we're decided to move forward with?
Yeah, and, and unfortunately, I can't be here to poke at you next month or the month after, so, maybe I'll come back in three months, I'll be up in Tennessee.
We look forward to the poking coming in in February, then.
Thank you very much for considering our neighborhood, appreciate it.
All right, Mike, you got, you got plenty of direction on this, Mr. Schrocksel. Okay, good. All right, that ends our items, um, I'm gonna go to Commissioner Request, uh, Commissioner Adams, Zach? Okay, Commissioner Turner?
Uh, yes, um, does anybody have an update on the Georgetown boat ramp?
We're gonna get that, um, the workshop in first, um, this, this workshop in December.
Okay, so we're kinda getting there?
Yeah, where we are is, um.
Unfortunately, as you know, I can't talk to you about this outside these meetings, so.
Where we are is Jim Taron has been in contact with Leetzel, I think is their name, from Water Management, and they're just so backed up. We were supposed to have a report almost two months ago, we just happened to be unable to get it, so he promised me we would have, and I'm gonna sit down with him beforehand, and, uh, we're gonna go over that in the workshop in December.
It's, uh, very frustrating to me how long it takes to do anything in government. Unfortunately, I'm getting a little bit used to it, but it's still frustrating that it takes three years just to figure out if you can build the thing or not. Mr. Schrocksel, how are we coming on our spray plan? You said something to me the other day about that you got one of your employees that's very interested in going and getting his spray license, where we can start the, I'd like to see that in place by the spring, when the grass starts growing, I think we can save tremendous dollars, especially on the boom mower operation by spraying the inhibitors with the sprayer, and I know we've already bought the rig and everything, we just got to have the licensed individual.
Correct, uh, talked with Robert and our, our new mowing supervisor, he, he wants to go take the test, and so we're, we're, uh, I'm not sure if he's set up the meeting yet, but we're meeting with the, the pest guy, is it FDP or somebody, I think, but Robert knows who, exactly who he is, he needs to contact.
Our goal is to have that program operational by the time the grass goes back to growing in the spring, correct?
Correct, that's correct, yes.
Good. Do you ever use that spider that y'all have, that piece of equipment that was bought several years ago, that seemed to me like it was really a, piece of equipment that was specialized in cer, for real certain things? You ever even use the thing anymore?
It was used about a month ago, uh, but it, we don't have anybody that's really skilled on that thing. It, it does take a special operator, they used to have to operate it almost daily to be good at it. To tell you the truth, we, we do not use it that much.
Yeah, I was afraid of that. So, anyhow, um, I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir.
You know, you did better than I did, when I became just a regular commissioner from being chairman, I had a lot to say that day, you remember that? Poor Mr. Pickens caught it for me. I had a list. Commissioner Rawls, any requests?
Um, following up on the spider, is it something that we need to consider getting rid of if we're not gonna use it, or?
I, I thought about it, but I didn't really talk to, you know, our, our crew about it, but.
It's not that old a piece of equipment, and it probably has a lot more value now than it would a couple of years from now if it sits around. Can you talk about, uh, Milliken? And what we're looking at right now? I'm catching a lot of flack on the Westover side of Milliken.
Is that the, 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 uh, the one closer to the, west, or the West River Road, is that, that side?
Yeah, it's close to Westover, that end's got the Millings. That end's got the Millings.
Okay. They, they were supposed to go out and do some, some patchwork, but, uh, the one that I know about is we, we did, uh, put together a small project to, to raise up parts of Milliken Road, the dirt portion, uh, and that was, if we did it in-house, it'd still be about fifty-six thousand dollars of material. It's, it's still a lot of material that we need to bring in.
But what about getting rid of the water that's causing the problems?
That, again, and until I can find a, uh, some type of easement to get that water off of, up of there, it's just, there, there's nowhere for the water to go. That whole area, you know, in a couple square miles, is, is, there's only a foot or two of elevation change.
A what?
A foot or two of elevation change.
Wow.
It, it's very flat.
So, the ditches that we looked at are not real or not?
Well, they're, they're there. They just, they're a hole of water, unless we can somehow get it.
But are they, are they, do we have right of way? Are they, are they are ditches?
There, there are ditches. Well, alongside the road, yes.
No, no, I mean, the ones that we saw going off?
No, I, I don't, we don't have any record of any, any, uh, any county-owned easements going through there to get the water off there.
That's gonna be a problem. I mean, the, the middle of Milliken Road is like a bowl and there's, there's two ditches that head towards the St. John's River. And we were told that they were hand dug and they were, that they were county-owned ditches, but just never maintained.
The Corps of Engineers had an easement years ago, but I cannot find anything.
Is it something we can contact the Corps of Engineers? Maybe have a meeting with them and have some look at it?
I'll talk with Mr. Suggs, see if he can find out something. James, James Suggs?
Well, I, I don't know if, if, if a lobbyist is gonna do any good. You know, uh, we need to talk to folks in Jacksonville, probably, if it's their, if, if it's in fact their, um, ditches.
Well, he's out of Jacksonville, isn't he? I believe he is, yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, if, if, if not, then we're gonna have to go with some sort of solution, because...
And that's, that's, again, sort of like what we're gonna do, uh, at St. John's River Estates, is raise that road up a bit.
But it doesn't get rid of the water?
It doesn't, no. It'll, the water will stay in, in the sides of the ditches, but I don't know what I'll, I can't, I can't get it off the road. I mean, there's, there's nowhere for me to take it.
I, I gotta believe that at some point in time, those ditches that go to the east or, or opened up, and there's, there's gotta be something laying around that says they're ours or they're Army Corps or somebody's to maintain, that...
We can't even not find anything in our records.
That's very, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's very, uh, that's not an isolated incident at all. Those that, uh, around the post office in East Placa, uh, you know, there's a lot of areas in the town, there's just nowhere to send the water. It's too flat and there's nowhere for it to go. You can dig all the ditch you want. The area we were talking about at Riverside, same way, when the, when the river gets so and across, uh, the bridge over on the other side of, of Seventeen South, those whole areas in there, when the water comes up in the river, there's nowhere to send the drainage water to. So, it actually gets more coming back.
So, the issue that we have here is, uh, Milliken Road is probably three miles? Is that about right?
Yeah, part, yeah.
And you've got farmland on, on one side that's been clear cut and it, the water sheets off that real quick, and then it hits a small ditch and it's, you know, toward the middle portion and, and the beginning at Palmetto Bluff, it piles up on top of the road, and then that ditch is filled up as well. And it's not flowing to the north and the south at all. Um, it's just, both those ditches sit there. The property to the east of us, east of it has the, that, uh, one big ditch we're talking about. And there's a, there's a county culvert that, that, um, has been put there. It looks like an attempt to connect that ditch, but...
I understand. I was just trying to explain, this is not an isolated incident throughout the county, especially when in some areas back many years ago, they just built a road right through a wetland, 'cause that's the only access they had to a piece of property. So, they built the road up, but it doesn't go anywhere when it rains now. We even, out in, um, Hootdale Ridge, I think you remember when we tried, when we got Billy Marsh to let us dig an access back in the woods, and, uh, even though he wouldn't give us easement, he gave us enough easement to satisfy legal to let us go dig this deal back in the woods. It kept the water from building up on Ivanhoe down there that was over the, over the road eighteen inches. So, uh, you know, it's a lot, not an isolated incident. I just don't know if you can fix some of these situations.
We've got quite a few people living back there, and if, if there's, you know, I, I think we need to put that on our priority list. That was, um, when, uh, we were talking about legislative asked, that's, was my ask, is that we take a look at getting money from the state to see if we can fix that area, because there are quite a few people that are impacted by that.
'Cause, uh, you know, College with a D Road way up north, uh, you know, that's on the dirt to pave list, but we had to raise that up six inches or almost, I think it was almost a foot we raised it, we're raising that road up.
But what would be the answer, Mr. Troxell? I know to get legislative appropriation, you got to give them a plan. You just can't say, I wish you'd throw a million dollars at my project. We had, when we got the East Placa mitigation monies, we had to actually present a plan and what we were gonna do and what have you. So, you saying that you're, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, for not asking permission, but, but you said that you didn't know where to send the water to or what we could do with it, so are we gonna ask for additional money to build that road up? Are we gonna ask for, to try to come up with some kind of a, buy a drainage easement from somebody or rent one? Or if you could figure out, I mean, even if you have a drainage easement, if you had a drainage easement from here to that door and you dug a canal fifty feet deep, the water still ain't going anywhere, except from here to that door fifty foot deep. So, you got to have somewhere to send the water to.
Sure, we've got, we've got, um, uh, what's the, Cedar Creek out there is not too far away. You know, there, I, I think if we could get a drainage, if, if there's not a drainage easement, assuming there's not, if we can get a drainage easement, that would resolve the problem. And it, because of where it's located right in the middle, it would drain everything back to the middle. It would shoot it to the east. All that land's dry. You've got some farming operations out there, they're, those guys have cut their property. They've cut it right to the road. That's, that guy we talked to, he said, yeah, but, he said, we gotta get, we're planting blueberries there. We can't have that much water, and they've, they've got it cut right to the, to our, our ditch.
Sending their water to us.
Yeah, I'm just asking. They're, Kelly Smith is one of them. They've, they've got it cut.
Okay, Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Harvey, I was, um, yesterday I was talking to Mike Troxell and asking some more questions about the equipment that we approved today. It was almost deja vu, because four years ago, my first meeting, we approved purchasing some equipment, and one of them was that spider, and it was gonna do wonders, and we're not utilizing that. I, I really believe we're in the cycle, uh, we're out of the drought cycle and we're in the rain cycle, and then y'all will probably agree, you know, the river will go back down, and I think we're gonna continue to have this rain. So, um, didn't you say that you were looking at maybe some options of where that could be used differently than just in the ditches? Or didn't you say you could put a different, a mower head on it or something?
You can put, uh, uh, on these, uh, Moremax mowers that were, that you authorized to purchase or leases, uh, they, they have several functions. You can put different heads on the end. They have flail mowers.
No, I mean, the spider.
Oh, the spider? Oh, that's, that one is, it's, it's almost a, it's almost a unique for, for a small, unique circumstances. Now, some of them, it would be perfect for some of these drainage ditches that, that our normal, um, gradealls can't get to, and they, they need to straddle something or, or dig in, like the one up on, is it, we, me and you looked at it, Bostwick? Is it Bostwick by the fire department or whatever that goes across by the back of the church or something?
Yeah, we were, yeah. That goes behind the church, behind Ms. Pittman's property.
That, that is about the only way, I mean, that, that would be a perfect spot for the spider, uh, 'cause it would fit down through there and it, it could maneuver and move all the independent legs, so that would get, you know, across there. Just need the operator.
We also need, we, we also need a piece of equipment that's gonna be used more. If it's sitting down there eleven months out of the year and we're using it for four weeks, that's the kind of stuff you go out and hire somebody to do for you. So, you know, it, I think that Commissioner Rawls' first question is adequate. Maybe we need to look at, do we wanna get rid of that thing and take it and put the equipment funds from it towards some of these? There's no sense in letting it just sit in East Placa and rust. It costs too much. So, it may be if you can't put a mulching head on it, or you can't do something to make it more valuable piece of equipment than what it is, maybe we need to look at just getting rid of it and taking that money and buying, you know, an extra farm tractor where we can run all our leveling blades, or maybe we need to do something that we can do on a daily basis instead of two or three weeks out of the year. Sorry, Commissioner Pickens.
That's what I was attempting to get to. It might, it might be time to get a short sale on it and get rid of it. And I would vote for an extra tractor to run the leveling blades in District One, 'cause it's the only piece of equipment that we don't have down there, is an extra tractor. So, and I do believe, and I know Press Thompson's working on this, and I know the, I think the piece got broke, broken before they could even try it out, but I think the herbicide program, the spraying program, needs to be really looked into, because I think it will go well with these new pieces of equipment and the boom mowers and, and the whole, you know, ditch maintenance and the drainage maintenance. I think we really need to look at that.
Yeah, 'cause you guys talked to me many times, you know, our two biggest issues are drainage, drainage and grass. That's the two biggest complaints, you know? Roads are the close third, probably, uh, but if you fix the drainage, a lot of times you'll fix the roads. So, uh, so we need to focus on is, are those...
I don't think our previous, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I don't think our previous, and at the expense of getting scolded again by Commissioner Pickens, um, I don't think our previous public works director was a fan of leveling blades. We kinda shuddered them down his throat, and because he wasn't a real fan of them, I don't think he ever u, tried to use them to the ability that they could have been used. The whole idea was to take them leveling blades and use them during the summer, the winter time, hook to the tractors that we use to mow with during the summer. That way, we're utilizing the tractors year-round and, and cross-train the people that are mowing in the summer, cross-train them to drag them leveling blades in the winter time. Then we can get more utilization out of the same equipment with a low-cost leveling blade instead of a quarter of a mill or $370,000 road grader. That was what the plan was.
You done, Commissioner?
It also, it took two times to get Press to understand that we wanted those leveling blades. So, when you came on board, you pushed that to that. And I think, I know the people in East River Park are tickled to death when those come in there, 'cause it's not invasive as a grader, and, um, they're faster, you know? So, I think we need to try to utilize those a lot more, so. That's all I have.
Do you need, I mean, you're, you're saying that you, you need to get training for your employees. Do you need more employees as well? Do you, do you have enough staffing right now to be able to turn some people loose, let them go get relevant training, come back and turn some other guys loose, or?
For, uh, obviously, no one ever has enough people, uh, but, uh, yeah, for us to increase the level of service we're giving, uh, giving the county, yeah, we need more people, uh, or more money and contract some of that stuff out, what we've talked about in the past. But, uh, as far as training goes, uh, I have talked with Ring Power and especially with the grader training, uh, and I haven't got a cost yet from them, but what it would cost to come in here and, they've done it in the past, uh, come in here and train our folks on, on the proper grading techniques, pulling in ditches properly, uh, how to crowd the road properly, um, and then how to pull a ditch. I mean, you can, you can pull ditches with graders, it's, it's... Turn the blade up, and it, I've been watching a lot of YouTube, my, my wife's up in Ohio.
What about, what about culvert maintenance?
What's that?
What about cleaning out culverts on driveways? 'Cause that also seems to be an issue. When you drive down the roads, you see them three-quarter full.
We, uh, again, we, we do the culvert maintenance cleaning out. Uh, we do have a, uh, a VAC truck or, that we use, but again, we, I don't know how often we get called to, to clean out culverts. I don't think we get called that often. We can't go around check every culvert, obviously, uh, but if, if someone calls in and says, hey, this, my culvert's blocked, can you come clean it out? I'm assuming we do. We use that thing every so often.
So, we'll, we'll do driveway culverts for folks? Okay. I mean, if, if it doesn't get done, it's just gonna create problems for people upstream, so, okay.
All right, you done, Mr. Pickens?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, um, no doubt, uh, we, we talked about this. We need a drainage plan for the county. We've all talked about it, and you're right. I don't experience all the problems that the other commissioners do, because the MSBU's that are mostly in my area are citizens-run, drainage is included, mowing's included, and, and repair is included. So, I don't get a lot of that. But I do sympathize, because looking throughout the county, if we could get a handle on drainage, we'd be much better off, and, and we're not, and, and there's no place to send the water. Question I have for you, looking over the, the CIP report, the Capital Improvement Plan,